You're ready.
Yes, ready. Compton Community College District Board of Trustees meeting. I call this meeting to order on November nineteenth, twenty twenty four at five oh, five eleven P M. Five eleven P M. Row, uh, item one oh one, row call, please.
Trustee Thomas. Doctor Little.
Present.
Uh, trustee Sonia Lopez excuse absence, trustee Juanita Delphomar excuse absence, trustee Ronald.
Present.
President Calhoun.
Present.
Doctor Curry.
Here.
Item two point oh one, approval of closed session agenda, and I have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Doctor Little, second by trustee Ronalds. Do we have any discussion, Doctor Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Ronalds? President Calhoun, no discussion. See, no discussion, please place your online vote.
Press for the vote. Yeah.
Yes.
Item.
Oh, sorry.
Item three point oh one, request to address the Board of Trustees, closed session agenda matters. Do we have any request to address the Board of Trustees on closed session agenda matters?
No, we do not.
Okay. Item three oh two, Compton Community College District Board of Trustees, future agenda request. Trustee, do we have any future, do we have any requests for future agenda items, Doctor Little?
No, none at this time.
Trustee Ronalds? None for myself. Recede, okay. Always say this wrong. Reset the closed session agenda with the Ralph Brown Act, Government Code, Section five four nine five zero, and following, and Education Code, Section seven two one two two, to discuss or take action on the following items. I will adjourn to closed session at five thirteen P M.
This meeting was ordered at six P M.
No, I don't need to get out, I hate to get out. I can be Steve Harvey. But then again, at the end, I will have to give you money to take care of your needs. There you go.
Trustee Thomas. Doctor Little.
Present.
Trustee Little, excuse, add again, trustee Delphomar excuse absence, trustee Ronalds.
Present.
President Calhoun.
Present.
Yes.
Yeah, five oh two, and pledge allegiance. He belongs. Doctor Little.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Please leave your zed up, pledge allegiance.
Oh, sure. Are we ready to begin? Your right hand over your heart. And we can speak in unison.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It's with the public, all of these citizens, our nation, without individual, with every single justice for our own. Item six, we know that we're taking extra steps. Pursuant to Government Code, Section five four nine five seven one one. Nothing to move on. Seven point oh one, approval, open session agenda, Doctor Curry, do we have any corrections or additions to the agenda?
No.
Can I have, alrighty, hey, alrighty. Moved by trustee Ronalds, second by Doctor Little, do we have any discussions, student trustee?
Um, no discussion. Doctor Little, no discussion.
Channel such, please place your online vote. Item eight, request to address the Board of Trustees on agenda and non-agenda matters. Pursuant to Board Policy two three five zero, public participation. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Trustees on agenda and non-agenda items. Each person will have three minutes.
Lawrence Albiteri from Master Struggling Academy on a non-agenda item.
Hey, my name is Lawrence. I work for Master Struggling Academy, and we train students for women and men for commercial driving licenses. I've been coming to the pack meetings here for well over a year, and I, I've been talking to a lot of anybody who are recently, um, released. And I always thought, why isn't Compton College have, uh, commercial driving folks here? So I did a research, and a few, uh, adult schools do have, uh, classes as well as after reading a college. I went to speak to a young lady, um, by the name of Veronica, who was in charge of the admission and part of helping a course be set at that school. So with her resource, all the information that was taken for her to start that school there, uh, she says she'd be more than willing to give any information at the form I need. I also spoke to my boss, she's not here, we lost her family, but she does, um, have the inside things, and also the financial side, to give trucks if we get approved. I also, I spoke to Jake Keel and other parole officers, what the C D C R has, um, are backed, and what better place to do it than Compton College? Second chances, you guys already have a first program, Sky, she's running it, the formerly incarcerated, uh, citizen transition. And I myself, I'm a former lifer, I served over twenty-six years on a life sentence. And I did get my license when I got out, and I've been doing pretty good for myself. So myself coming to the pack meetings, it's a big deal because I'm going to share, actually the meaning of what we're coming out, what they can do, if they put the best foot forward. So I'll let propose, uh, of course be brought to the air to Compton College.
We don't answer back.
Thank you.
Somebody out there heard, so. We'll leave that, yeah. Are you saying?
No, I'm not.
Oh.
They were asking on non-agenda item.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Last month, I addressed me a few of the public relations facilities to the community. With a pamphlet, five years ago, this. Report to the community, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty three. Omitted from the forty, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty three, low retention enrollment, low retention rate, low graduation rate. Campus, the gentlemen responded and just disappeared in despite of easter high school. Who wants to fund it? Earned it this year, a forty million dollar bond was stolen. Farmers' grant, back in the waters, paid eight hundred and fifty thousand to renovate, grant students to the technology building. This language is also used to justify to the voters, by to the voters to approve a two hundred million dollar bond. The college has a hundred and fifty-one million in general obligation debt. Now at two hundred million obligation debt. The three hundred and fifty-one million in general obligation debt is paid by the community. This board of trustees have failed the community for this college to thrive, they don't even get the teaching students, low retention rate, low graduation rate, and they're continuing to thwart his administration for this college to thrive. This board is not acting in the best interest of the voters for this college. As I stated before, you are not the voting, you are the rock.
My name is Mika Black. On a non-agenda item.
Good evening, Compton Community, trustee Boyd, doctor Curry. I'm here to give an update on the Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. I felt and Mr. Holly Phil met with doctor Curry, uh, a few weeks ago to get an update on the naming. I am here today to request an agenda item for the next December meeting, um, for discussion and for vote. For the Emily B. Hart Holyfield signage to be placed outside of the building. And also for Emily B. Hart Holyfield to be named in perpetuity. Additionally, um, the naming inside will be corrected as voted by the board in May. The Emily B. Hart Holyfield, I'm happy to report on that. And so that will be restored, I haven't been given an exact date, but I'm pretty sure by the end of this year, twenty twenty four. Um, we're also looking forward to being able to sponsor three students. Doctor Curry has informed us that the cost of one year of enrollment here at Compton College is one thousand dollars. Will be awarded each three students, a thousand dollars each, um, in the month of March, twenty twenty five, in honor of women's history. The cost of the funding of the college will be fundraised by the Holyfield family and our church community back this church. So the cost of the naming will not be incurred on the college, the college or the residents or taxpayers won't have to pay for it. And I hope you get a really nice sign, that you guys can use the answers on. Also, I apologize again, so Mr. Hodges is downstairs. Fifty-six minutes, thank you guys, have a good night.
That was the last thing. Item, eight oh two, Compton Community College District Board of Trustees, future agenda items required. Trustee? Do you have any requests for future agenda? Good, trustee.
No, not at this moment.
Doctor Little. Trustee Ronalds. Item number nine, Board of Trustees, medium minutes. Nine oh one, minutes of the October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, Board of Trustees meeting, can I have a motion?
Um.
Second. Moved by Doctor Little, second by trustee Ronalds. Do we have any discussion, student trustee Thomas?
No.
Trustee Ronalds. Please place your online vote. Item ten, reports from representative and community organizations. Item point oh one, associate student government report, Sky.
I'm always scared.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're just here to report my energy, because baby's worried about taking it. We collaborated to save our country, for war, for our home base. And we hosted a workshop on rest, what we're wearing. This month, we collaborated with financial aid, and the veterans, and most urgent. For our students and staff that have heard of our country. Tomorrow will be celebrated religious people month, with their oral history, eagle dance, and make sense of legal proceedings. Finally, we are having a turn rate to begin with the campaign, along with, um, even tomorrow, for the attention. Thank you.
Item one oh two, academic senate report. John Moore.
Good evening, everybody. So I had the opportunity to attend the T A S for Thanksgiving, and the food was very good, so I just want to thank the district. Um, at the November first seventh, academic senate meeting was our last meeting. We approved the new ethnic studies, one oh eight, Chicana and routine of feminism course, as well as B P forty-one, to enter, uh, graduation requirement degrees. And we also approved the Compton College Conference of Master Plan twenty thirty-five, which includes our new mission statement as well. That was included in the November fifteenth summary of decisions through the district. In regards to student learning outcome processes, the academic senate was presented in limited insights. Information and a team will call me to vote to potentially adopt the new process this Thursday at academic senate. Also scheduled for action coding items at our upcoming, uh, senate meeting are academic senate recommendations for the collaborative reverence and dealing recommendations report. Academic senate lobby division team membership process. Academic senate goals, limited insights, and recommendations from the hiring, prioritization agreement. Up for a first read at this Thursday is a draft of the combined simple by mandatory, as well as optional check list items. Due to student and some faculty concerns, uh, during the academic senate executive meeting with the district last Friday on November fifteenth, um, we discussed potentially looking into possibly adopting our own narrative, including immigration enforcement activities. Uh, during the council of Monday, uh, I provided some information about our new non-credit E S L seven four citizenship preparation course, which was just launched yesterday. I've also had conversations with, um, our E S L instructor about potentially designing a high step preparation program, which will shock four new non-credit E S L courses. Of course, I mean, we become the academics in the first for approval and into the district, but I'm just letting you know, it's just a session right now, it's just in the works. So if you see it come down the pipeline, so it's just ahead. Um, we have had some issues with our Wi Fi, and I want to thank the district for being so active for looking into it. That concludes my report, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
C C, item ten point oh three, C C C F E, certificated employees report. Doctor Dana Chabey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Trustees, good evening, Sally, sending their process staff, administrators, and our community members, most importantly. Uh, so, uh, just have a, an update to provide for, uh, for y'all, I haven't been able to come, but I've had, um, our VP, uh, uh, president, I don't think he comes, um, as well as Chris making notice, but just have a couple of comments to give you all an update, right? So three things. Um, first, just in, in general, as the, one of the, one of the labor sites here on campus, right? Um, it's important for us to acknowledge that the, um, the, the, since we last met, the election has happened, and now we have, um, the, the, the federal level, um, a very anti-union administration coming in, and a swing more towards the right. So for us as, as labor, uh, these are, uh, are times that are both concerning, but also times for call to action and collective and building partnerships, and building bridges, uh, for the rights of workers here, uh, in terms of our, uh, faculty, but also all the workers here in our, in our campus and, and our community that we serve. So, uh, just kind of, uh, first kind of saying that acknowledging that, uh, labor has a role to play, it always has a role to play. Uh, historically, it's had a, a role to play, um, as a historian myself, Lewis history, right, the role to play in civil rights and human rights, um, and the rights of working people, it's having dignified life. So, uh, we're, we're kind of putting that out there, that is, there's things that we're thinking of, and, and we're continuing to move in that direction as a, as labor. Uh, so again, one of the labor units has that with us. Um, the second thing I wanted to bring up, uh, is giving you a little date on, you know, where we at with negotiations. I know that the, the board, uh, trustees, you all met, uh, with different relations, you do that before each meeting. And I just wanted to give you some additional information to help, and to give you the picture about where we're at and the, and where we're trying to head with our regular negotiations. So, um, I have a couple of documents I want to pass out to the board of trustees, members of the place. We don't care about that. Obviously, for her. So, these are two of our student trustees and our three trustees here as well. Um, so, what you see in front of you is, and I'm sorry, I don't have it for all the audience, but I can all just go ahead and do my best, right? Is that we have, uh, a chart here, something we've been doing from the beginning, trying to compare us to the rest of L A County. Um, there's thirteen different community college districts in L A County. And when we look at, uh, which we haven't talked about as much, is our part-time faculty members, a very important part of academic labor. A majority of, of workers in terms of numbers of academic labor in L A County. We can see that comes in, just like our full-time faculty numbers are at the very bottom, unfortunately. Uh, we can see that, uh, all the other districts, uh, in our county have made progress towards trying to improve, uh, not only the wages, but also the, uh, uh, the living conditions and, and the, and the conditions of their, uh, workers' families and their communities. Uh, by moving towards, you know, more towards the right and towards, uh, sort of dignified wages, if you say. Um, unfortunately, we've been pretty stagnant, as you can see, um, obviously, this is having to do with our, we haven't finalized our, our, um, our proposals and our, and our, haven't finalized our bargaining agreement, but we are well behind the rest of our districts, I'm sorry, the rest of our county. Um, at forty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents, uh, uh, an hour as compared to some of our other colleagues, um, close to Tampa's being Long Beach, uh, which is now at sixty-nine dollars and two cents, or, um, South, Southwest College, a part of the L A's Community College District at a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents for, um, starting off as a part-time faculty member. And I, I know, um, something that guides the district, and I definitely, you know, in, in a right way guides, uh, Doctor Curry, um, you know, as well as that budgets are reduction of values. Right, what we invest, uh, for our district is a reflection of, of how we see the students and how we see, uh, the values of the district in, uh, wanting to be focused on. And unfortunately, right now, the, the reflection of the, our, our faculty salaries, again, a, a workforce that is, um, as unique to L A County in terms of majority of people of color, um, our, our Latino and African, uh, American, uh, faculty members are unique as opposed to, if someone having, myself having worked at multiple community colleges in L A. That, um, and also being able to serve the students that we serve, right, are, are, are unique service area as well. I think it pointed in a direction that we have to move in, in, in the right, uh, direction in terms of our values. I think we've done so, I know there's a celebration today for our building, uh, completion of, uh, building, construction building one and instructional building two, which is a great asset to support our students. Uh, but I think the piece that's still missing here, and what we've been, um, bargaining at the table for, is, um, not just the exterior of the building, but actually content on the inside of the building, which where learning happens and knowledge is produced, and students are moving towards their goals, both academically and career-wise. So I bring this here to, to let you know where, where we're at, as you can see where the district proposal is on the table. Um, we are, we've come down significantly, we, we have this current proposal, um, getting us towards, moving us towards competitiveness, because it is hard to recruit and retain, uh, faculty members, uh, who are coming here as a, a part-time basis, it's very hard to retain, because I know that, uh, um, this is a, it's a high turnover rate, um, I don't have the percentages here, but it is a big issue in terms of we want to recruit and make a, uh, talented faculty members, and also those first-time, part-time faculty members, um, who are predominantly people of color as well. Um, and also coming from working class backgrounds too. So I think this is some, uh, and points to that other north star of our campus, which is equity. And when we look at these numbers, we don't really see it. Where, uh, I'm, I'm bringing this up to the district's attention, because, or sorry, the board of trustees, I've heard from the district, our bargaining team, I see many of the bargaining team members here. Uh, and Doctor Curry, can we meet your, for meeting, uh, once, uh, once a month now, which has been great to talk about these issues? Uh, but I do want to bring it here to the board of trustees, so that it's known that, right now, we're being, we're, we're trying to come to the table, but, uh, sticking, uh, to the district bargaining, uh, team sticking to, uh, uh, an arguing over six dollars an hour, um, and not moving in the direction, I think is, uh, uh, it's not what we should, we should be able to, we should be able to move on this contract. We should be able to look at the reality of the economic situation, um, for our workers and also our, our service community, and, and come, uh, and, and come with a, a proposal, or come together on a proposal that will actually meet the cost of living adjustments and, and, uh, the issues that our, that faculty are facing. So, um, hopefully this is to provide you some more information, because ultimately, the board of trustees will sign off on the contract. You meet monthly with, uh, the negotiating, um, members. Um, so I just wanted to provide this, because this is a big part of what we're talking about, I've only really been talking, you know, presented information on our, our full-time salary, uh, schedule, but it's important, um, to talk about our, our part-time faculty members as well. So I wanted to present that, and, and again, you know, just kind of underscore the ways, that, but it's our reflection of the values of the district, so. Let's, uh, let's demonstrate not only to our service area, L A County, but to the, to the world that we are, um, have a, we value the knowledge that we produce in our classrooms, the labor of our, of our, of our workers, uh, counselors, librarians, uh, teaching faculty, our non-credit faculty, um, and our certificated, uh, vocational faculty in, in serving after me. And then the last piece, uh, I'm going to say, which is, uh, something that, um, has been coming, uh, to our attention as faculty members as well. And it's something that we've been discussing in, um, as the executive board of, uh, of the faculty union, and as actually just mentioned by, um, my colleague, Professor Moore, um, which is the, the question of the response by the districts, um, to, um, the, the impending, or will it be coming down the pipeline in terms of, uh, integration policy? Uh, I know we met with Compton City Council, uh, and we, we know that, and, and Doctor Curry let us know that, uh, they're kind of waiting right now to see what's going to be happening, and I understand that perspective. Uh, I think it's important to note that for the federation, um, is that we have a different perspective as well, we think we have tools and ability to, um, uh, implement a policy that will send a strong message to our, our service area, which is anywhere between thirty to forty percent of foreign-born, um, uh, peoples. Uh, L A County itself, um, has a large percentage, uh, of immigrant communities, including, uh, one out of every three African, uh, African peoples or African Americans that live in, in, uh, in Los Angeles County, has a member of their family or the adult living unit, uh, is being an immigrant as well. So this is not a, a one, uh, one ethnic group, uh, issue, but it's a multi-ethnic issue, land and region. And so, um, and the reason I say we have the tools available, is because the council's office on, uh, on the fifteenth of this month, sent out a, uh, a legal advisory to districts, uh, specifically Californians, community colleges remain sanctuary jurisdictions. And so we have a lot of really good evidence, uh, sorry, evidence. And so we have a lot of really good evidence, uh sorry, evidence guidance from the Chancellor's Office. We also have our our sibling campuses or sibling community college districts like um L A Community College District, Citrus College, and some of the other ones that have passed board policies that um that that comport with uh the law, but also send a strong message that our campus is a welcoming institution and that um if we do in in other parts as well, we I think it's it's only consistent, right, that our our district has constantly said in its uh in its uh out-facing language to the community that this is a, this is a place for everyone to feel safe and to learn and to feel respected and and have a dignified access to education and and their career. And so we are really trying to push the districts um or the board of trustees to think, to think about this. Um instead of um the current stance right now, which is to to wait and see what's going to happen on on January twentieth, is to be proactive rather than reactive. I think this is a great opportunity for for our district to do that. And we have guidance uh in in both from the Chancellor's Office at the state level, but also our our sibling campuses. I know immigration um advocacy, right, is a is a part of um part of something that's some members here of the board of trustees have been a part of. Um and overall, what our campus has done a great job at, we have a uh and a docu-allie uh work work group that's been working on these issues. So it only makes sense, I think, to pass a board policy um that is, again, that is uh instead of reactive, it's proactive. So I just wanted to kind of add that voice, and other people have already probably spoken about that too. And uh yeah, I look forward to uh continuing to work with the district, their board trustees. Um we'll see you on next month as well. Uh final thing is congratulations to the student manager office. And so here, congratulations and congratulations. Uh so um and also congratulations to the districts on patching measures CC as well. Um and so I'm saying to the to the people of our service area, and I'm assuming some people here probably voted for that. Um and so I think it's just a it's a great asset to start investing in. The community is showing its love to uh to our districts, and I think it makes sense for for us to do the same. Um and back to our board policy. So thank you all so much, and you all have a Thank you. Don't my brother, oh, thank you so much.
Ten point O four C C C F classified employee report. Oh, Brett, item eleven, presentation. All right, so it's overview. We're going to discuss briefly the summit mission and vision, the Compton College D P group, who we are, the summit proceeding, some of the keynote speakers that we were able to engage with, also the cultural experiences that we had, as well as Sankopa. We'll talk about what that means, because it's important for everyone to be grounded in what we're going to be doing. That's here in the next few minutes. Also, some of the key findings, recommendations for future engagement. Next slide, please.
All right, so I'm here to introduce to you what Sankopa means. So Sankopa means to go back and get it. And so what we decided to do, or what we got the opportunity to do to do rather, was to go to, well, faculty, teachers, all kinds of uh classified professionals, uh policymakers, academic advocates. We all united on the continent to really continue the work that we do to empower our communities and to empower our students. And so these systems that we came to challenge, we unfortunately sometimes uphold. And so we took the opportunity to really examine what we do, how we do that, and how we influence change and how we serve the students that are here in Compton and at Compton College. So I don't know if you all know of this saying, but it says, if you know where we're from or where we've been, you know how far we've come along. And so this summit allowed us to reflect, challenge, strategize, and create spaces that we will utilize to reimagine how we teach, influence, serve, and dare I say, love our students.
Next slide. All right, and so our informal or formal introduction, I'm just going to ask, and I call you by name, to please stand up in front of the board members. So Devorah Stae, she's representing our classified professional. All right, we also have Seku, Seku, right here in front, they can see. He's representing our classified professional, then we have Jose Estado, representing classified professionals. To represent our faculty, we had Ms. Bria Roberts.
Everybody.
We had Linda Wilkerson. And then last but not least, we had Echo Blake. And then we had our amazing students to join in the journey. We had Ashley Fisher. We also had our trustee, she put them in the back here. And then I topped it off with myself here, Dr. P. Next slide, please. So to talk more about the descriptive details of what happened when we engaged in the summit, we'll have Bria.
All right, so during the experience or during our conference, there was an amazing con, excuse me, roll con. So that's where we got to find out who was in the space, the faculty, the uh classified professionals, uh all of our administrators and all that. So it was real loud. We learned how to do some dances and all that great stuff. It was real cute. And then we had, of course, the panel discussion. Now, this is where it came out a little juicy, right? So we talked a lot about the impact of colonization on education, what that does to the spirit of students who might identify as African or indigenous. Uh and then we also talked about the dangers of actually utilizing colonized education practices or colonized curriculums for these spirits that are for these individuals that have a spirit that we have not touched. And so with that, what we were saying or what we have experienced was that we really had to talk about how to decolonize these spaces. And what we also don't address, but we got the chance to address at this conference, was how we look at decolonization with rose-colored linen, right? We think it's beautiful. We think it's fun. It's exciting. But this is where the real work comes in, and that's where we had to have those really nitty-gritty conversations. So we talked about decolonization in the classroom from K to twelve, higher education, and even in nonprofit organizations, because if we all know, if we receive money from somebody and they say how we spend it, that's how we have to spend it, right? So how do we challenge those ideas, those notions, and everything else that upholds a colonized educational system?
All right, so then, next, I want to talk about what we really did. So when we talk about being at a conference, you might think that we just sit and listen to people speak. No, we engage in our five senses. So I want you to imagine, if you close your eyes right now and you imagine this slide, you're there amongst vibrant places, colorful people, colorful attire, natural landscape, okay? Also, the sound, every time we went to anything related to the conference, there was always the beautiful sounds of drums. And you can just feel the vibrations in your spirit. Also, the languages, there are so many different languages there that we were able to engage in for for the beginning to the end, when we said good morning, when we said hello, when we said thank you, we were engaging in Diana talk. Right? Also, the sounds of nature, how beautiful it is to actually hear the birds and to see them. It's unlike any other space that you could ever imagine. Also, when you touch the fabrics and the garments that they use are different than what we see here. All right, and when we touched the the fabric that they had, they were so amazing to see the people actually putting them on your bodies, right? A lot of the pieces that were wearing, they were custom-made to us. And I think that was special. Also, the natural elements, again. When we had things like the uh mango or the pineapple, we actually saw where they were grown. We saw them fall from the tree. We saw these things, and just to be in that space was amazing. Next, the tea, traditional dishes in Ghana, un unlike any other. Um the fish, freshly caught fish. I mean, every single thing that we ate was fresh, okay? I cannot emphasize that enough. Again, the smell, the spices, seeing the street food, I mean, it's one thing to see the street food here in L A. When you're in Ghana and you see these women walking around the streets with fresh donuts and just fresh banana chips and just fresh fruits, that you know that they actually hand-prepared that morning is special. And then the tropical floor, imagine the beautiful trees and the scenes and the things that you have never seen in your life. I mean, you haven't seen a palm tree, you've seen one in Africa. Next slide, please. And then when speaking about Sankopa, there's a share that we're going to engage in as a group very briefly. Each member will share the experience that you see before you on that screen. There's five components on that. We connected with the culture. That means that we were connecting with the people of that native land, but also with our ancestors, those of us who are of African descent. Next, we went to actual villages and we were engaged in a mating ceremony. Imagine that. We now have African names that were granted to us from actual tribes. Museums, we went to museums that were unlike any other. Some of the museums that we went to actually are burial sites for those people who we visited. We also went to sacred spaces. These spaces required us to take our shoes off, because the land was used way back when our ancestors had to travel from Africa to other places to now become totally different, right? And then last but not least, the higher learning component. We went to the University of Ghana, where we not only saw people from Ghana, but we engaged in dialogue with people from nations all across the continent. What a beautiful space to see, more than nineteen countries represented in one university, right? So cool. And last but not least, we did a group project where we represented Compton College. Let's acknowledge the work that we're doing at our campus is transformational, not just there in the continent, but we do this work when we're on the ground in Compton. All right, and so now if we can go ahead and just share out what you learned in your Sankopa, what part with Devorah?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Um I'm going to speak about higher learning. Um Compton College regards itself as an institution of diversity and inclusivity. But could we be doing our duty to do service by not allowing academic programs that encourage cultural inclusivity and also invigorate their spirits to achieve their goal? For example, my visit to the Ebe Village in Ghana for the mating ceremony was life-changing. It was warm and lovely. The entire village was invested and shared in all of us receiving our African names and all of us being accepted as members of the tribe. And that's what we need to have brought you.
And um I don't give you like the meaning to travel to the motherland. And I was able to connect with the African culture. As an African, it was a life-changing experience. The people in Africa, the citizens, a natural ability of being humble, friendly, and always ready to serve their guests. They opened their eyes to welcome and that they call us our brothers and sisters. And they left all and they left all African, South African, American, North African, Africa, the Africa is their home. And they belong there. So it was something really good. And thanks again.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ashley Fisher. So I'm going to be presenting a village visit. The name of ceremony was a very inspiring experience. The name I was given was Ajjo Ebo Gamali. It means Monday born, second female born from Gabe Bu May clan and time for everything. This resonated with my life on a deeper level, my wishes for every African descendant to go back to the motherland to find out their real names other than their slave name. Being in the presence of a chief and belonging to a village was an experience that I will never forget, knowing that I have a home away from home. I will never forget that Compton College was the reason I went back to my homeland. Thank you so much.
Hello, everybody. I'll be talking about Boozam. So we visited the W E B Devorah Center, and it offered deeply enriching experience for all of us. It showcased the life of the first African American to earn a PhD from the University of Harvard. Okay, so his center is filled with memorabilia, including um, you know, his personal books, okay? And also his thesis of the suppression of the African slave trade. Devorah is also a key figure in the pan Africanism. He also worked alongside Dr. Flamey Yarama, who the museum would also visit. And uh he was also Ghana's first president. He helped to inspire African leaders and freedom fighter. This museum housed, the statue symbolizes his motto, forever, I'm sorry, forever back whenever, which means always look forward, never look back, right? And also served as the final resting place. And I just appreciate Compton College for allowing me to experience that. The motherland is just a wonderful experience for the officer, for the group as well.
One of the experiences that resonated with me was such a touched me ways that were somewhat like this. It was spiritually um amazing. And I'm grateful to Compton College that we're able, you know, to take such a trip, because we were able to like actually connect with our people in Africa and and be able to learn things that I wasn't expecting to learn, you know. I learned, you know, to do the summit. It was um it was enlightening and um I'm just grateful that I had the experience to go.
Hello, I'm going to speak on the sacred spaces of the Lina Castle. Um the Lina Castle was a good experience, um especially a vengeance that house uh slaves expected that number from ten million to twelve million slaves were sold during the three hundred years of Lina was in operation by very here three hundred years. And this is the largest um operative slave vengeance um in that part of Africa. Um it was a really um very emotional experience, most of what's on the excursion. And what this experience taught me is that the atrocities known as the transatlantic slave trade, um this is a global historical event, and it needs to be shared, needs to be addressed, and it needs to be embraced. Um it says that um the captives were mostly from western center Africa with disembarking in America's New Caribbean. And various European countries, the Dutch, the Portuguese, the British were all involved. So this is a worldwide issue. So um it was great to experience that with our colleagues and um something that we need to care, that we need to embrace, and something that you need to be um this known how to deck um human provide, and not just everything that happened in Africa. So I'd like to say I'd just speak about the um higher learning for the University of Ghana. And uh so what I wanted to share was, uh as we enter into an era of we come into what we know will be for these next few years, um I wanted to share that the two with decolonization, they mean rose-colored linen, they often dance together. And so what I learned from the University of Ghana is that we can't allow them to dance, right? We can't allow them to be, to coexist. And so it's not enough to see oppression and place a Band-Aid over the issues. I learned that rather is the responsibility of the, excuse me, is the responsibility of the institution, the call of order, the change that's influencing a campus culture that does not draw, excuse me, that does not divide, rather it unites, that does not oppress, rather it empowers. And not one that just teaches, but that equips students with what they need or what they're seeking and what employers and individuals are looking to have the ability to access. And so it's our job to assess and to allow students to assess themselves, what we bring to the table, and how to address us moving forward as a community versus just individual group.
All right, so our key findings that stood out to us as a collective, first and foremost, critical examination of African representation is necessary. So by creating an awareness of cultural and historical narratives of African identities, I think that that will continue to support all of our students, but particularly our students of African descent. Next, the commitment to social justice. By moving a strong focus on social justice, Next, the commitment to social justice. By moving a strong focus on social justice through guiding faculty, class professional, and administrators to address inequities in their work is the focal point of one of the findings. Next, indigenous and culturally relevant method. So the mention of the drums is very important because as mentioned, each and every activity that we did, we started with musical. Music is very important to people actively saying, but also all types of people love music. And so why not infuse that in what we do, right? That's one method. A last but not least, cultural appreciation, understanding the value of culture. Culture is not a race. Culture is a person. And so learning how to embrace people and appreciate and see that as a value is key. And so we believe to continue that is something that we're doing here at Compton, but we want to continue to get a lot of ready to go. Next slide please. Recommendations for future engagement. Before I start, I do want to let the trustee, um, speak about, um, something, so. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I just want to speak about, um, this opportunity. So, um, thank you to the board, thank you, um, Dr. Curry for allowing us to share this experience with one another. Um, this opportunity granted me access to meet and connect with my ancestors and to gain a fuller understanding of history. Um, their history is beyond, um, the history and the narrative of slavery. Um, we should know more, we should share, um, we should, uh, it gave me a stronger sense of identity and pride. That's what Africa did for me, and I thank you for that. And I thank myself for allowing to be in that vulnerability and be in that moment. Um, my journey from the National Ghana Museum down to the Elmina dungeons was overwhelming, brought me closer to my ancestors. The walk from the last bath, um, barefoot was just, um, very emotional, um, for me. Um, we all wanted to say thank you for allowing us to have this experience as individuals, but mostly important as a group. We are the G group and the G C crew, um, of two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you for allowing us to go to Africa. Um, I brought you back your gifts. And I brought, since Dr. Curry, everyone knows that Dr. Curry writes his own newsletter. I got him a newsletter from Africa from the Elmina dungeons. Um, and also, um, you being an African American, I brought you a little black boy because this could happen to you.
So as, as we continue to, to move forward with the rest of the presentation, just some of the recommendations for future engagement that we saw as a group. Having physical space for students, faculty, and classified professionals to interact so that we can embrace and value each other in our differences amongst the culture that we have here as a, as a unit, as, as a collective. Next, culturally related connection. The things that use of music and dance, I think that should be ignored. And when we talk about music, let's see, how many of you either go home or go to your car, that's the first thing we do, right? All right, so music is important, so we want to embrace that and connect that with the spirit of the person. And then last but not least, physical representation of the students and families in this community. Beautiful cultures, beautiful lives, beautiful values that we bring, and we just want to continue to embrace it as we do here at Compton College. Thank you for this time. Thank you for this script about the story. You don't know how much it changed us, how much it humbled us, how much we have grown as a collective. And with that, we want to go ahead and end it.
Yes, we want to make sure that, uh, more students can go within two years, so we can come up with funding to make sure more students can go. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't get to show everyone. That was so rude. So who was that, we don't have to say, there, bring some of that. There you are. I think it's so hard.
No, I'm sorry, I have a question. I, I just, but, but thank you guys so much for the presentation, been in, in the strange in this faculty, for you. Um, I think this has been very transformative and powerful. Um, so many takeaways. What I loved was the notion of collective period of this trip for everyone, that it wasn't for one room or another group, that it was about humanity and bringing the point of examples, slave trade, colonization, that was what initially started about language. People have fights about speaking English, speaking Spanish, both of them are colonizing languages, none of them are English. Although when you think about who's speaking what language, when English came to the U.S. and English, with Spanish came to the U.S. and other parts of the world with Spanish. And so I just think that not only can we be tough with whatever in mind, but of how much we have to continue to learn as we were talking about. How do we embed that? And my one question was, in addition to music, um, would love to hear in the future for me how that is embedded in some of the actual practices, on classrooms, student support, student engagement. What are the retentions that we sometimes don't know? Um, I apologize, sir, your, your, your name again?
Jose.
Jose. I suppose Jose was speaking, I thought about how many people don't know the pyramids in Mexico. Um, if you don't know about the history of the Afrikaans and the indigenous folk before the line was moved, you need to go and look at the structures and the ceramics. And it'll help us modern day when people create divisions. But it's not accidental. But when we don't know our history, history doesn't repeat itself, human being. Repeat history. So I just want to thank you all for embodying that. And again, thank you, Dr. Curry. Because as always, whether people know it or not, Compton College is always at the forefront of innovation. Yes, we have lots to do, we have a lot of space to grow. But please do not minimize the impact of opportunities and the work that they've done. Thank you. Question marks?
I'll just make it clear, Don. Thank you for that lovely presentation.
I thought it was all beautiful. I was waiting for the music to come on.
We were told this is a professional thing.
We got called out in Africa.
We represented Compton and Africa. We have videos to prove it. Yeah, we trust you, but just saying you shine rightly.
You played, you played the music when you first was coming up. And music is the soul, music is for everybody, and you're exactly right. We know doggone well, every time I get in my car, when I leave here, I don't know if y'all hear, but my music is like that. Okay, I'll be going boom boom, you can hear my feet just go boom boom, you know? So music is the dance of life. Music is what we hear. Music embodies all of us. Music runs through our soul. So that was a great report. Thank you. I'm glad y'all enjoyed it. And in two years, you got a great point. We need to send some more.
Come on now.
We just gotta figure out how to raise the money out of the, on hand over.
I just wanted to say one last thing. Many people don't know what was first, first limits. It was the Ghanaian navigator, brought him over here. But he couldn't find it by himself, but it tells you also that the Nans have been coming to this space. And so the beauty of that exchange is so wonderful. So meeting a term?
Eleven oh two?
Yeah, so now we have our two enrollment presentations that I would like to introduce, uh, Dr. with his laptop, introduce our speakers.
He loved the one that Robin. Okay, we have Darlene Sarazin, who is our interim director of our, actually.
Excuse me, before we put these down, members of the public, I am here to go over to enrollment. I unfortunately do not have a control of your child. We do have the sacred, of course, all of the great work that were to be done. So our typical content for today, I'm gonna briefly go over the different enrollment programs that we have available here at Compton College. Briefly touch on how we do this, a multi-department collaboration. Again, touching into a little bit more deeply what's that type of enrollment program is, as well as highlighting data for every one of the different programs. And then lastly, touch on the early outreach that we began, and then what our updates are. So again, to enrollment at Compton College, we accord K through twelve students the ability to benefit from concurrently enrolling in college classes while still in high school to minimize the equity gap for access. One thing that I also wanted to point out here, um, a recent study by the University of Columbia, so we have roughly two point five million U.S. high school students participated in dual enrollment, and this represents largely about twenty percent of our overall community college enrollment. And I'm gonna briefly touch into where we're located on this site here at Compton College. So again, we would not be able to report these opportunities to our students if it wasn't for the multi-department collaboration that we have ongoing. So I do want to highlight some of the main stakeholders that we have here at our campus. First, beginning with academic affairs, building that curriculum for what dual enrollment programs we will offer our high schools, our partner districts, and overall really seeing what our students want at the forefront of their education. Next, we go into faculty assignments, right? Also going over how we support our faculty and what pedagogical practices they can implement in their teaching to support high school students in that process. Also going into progress reports, how are our high school students performing in class? Are they succeeding? Are they retaining their coursework? Next, with admissions and records, supporting us with the registration of student and then also by posting grades. Next, our company ignited pathways. We also ensure that every student has an educational plan available to them. So we do have a part-time guided pathway counselor that is assigned to different high schools where they are updating educational plans consistently, ensuring that students only know where it's currently at in the process. But that they also have an educational plan at the end of their dual enrollment program, like beyond that as well. Next, going over distance education, where we also connect with some of the stakeholders, including Alistair, ensuring that students don't have any, um, technical issues such as them not being able to look at content or anything like that as well. Here is where my just heartland comes in, our team, where we support a lot of our high schools with application, admission, admission application workshops, as well as onboarding their students, ensuring that they're having my confidence set up, that they're properly registered in the courses that they submit a request for. Next, we go over student support services, right? So ensuring that every single student has the support that they need. And we do this by identifying what's a critical benefit from. Do that by offering for the other follow-up, where every single dual enrollment specialist has their weekly enrollment meetings where they go over where some of our strength areas are in dual enrollment. They highlight some of the comments that we've done for the past a day, and moreover, what was important, where assistance we have on census to support them and helping out that area as well. We partner with student-based needs by offering equity emergency grants, where we identify that students, ones that are eligible to receive these ones, that they shop for, and get a grant, and they can be afforded with. And then lastly, with the student success venture, where we come here with various different high schools of our district to offer extended tutoring services at their high schools. One of the examples in which we do this is one of our districts highlighted that a lot of their students were struggling with their math scores and how we can go ahead and provide services offsite. Very quickly, most of the students inside centers said, we previously been able to offer tutoring support offsite. What are the main reasons that you can send someone out there or that can they even afford any opportunities without them having to something? All right, so now I am going to touch into the types of dual enrollment. So we mainly have five different dual enrollment programs and then hopefully with our public board initiative. So our first one is our regular K through twelve program, which I'll touch, I'll touch on each program individually, just highlighting the first five. The second one is our afternoon college program. The third one is our Compton Early College High School. Our fourth is our eighty-two eighty-eight or college career access pathway CPAC program. And then our fifth one is an instructional service agreement, but he probably won't ever have a D at maximum size, which is so we do it on, it helps me to be successful. So first starting off with regular K through twelve, what it is is essentially open to any high school student who is not part of an agreement with one of our K through possible districts. So this can be a student who may be at the U.S.D. or any other student across California or even across the nation as well. These students may enroll in any class except activity based physical education courses, but this also excludes sports. Lastly, the main area that I want to focus on for our regular K through twelve is that we do not directly engage these students, and we do not directly provide that follow-up assistance where we've identified the media improvement, maybe struggling in class. Because unfortunately, we may not have an M O B with that district. So again, we offer the support by being able to assist them with admission application workshop and also ensuring that they're properly registered in that course. The next program that we have is our afternoon college, which is essentially courses that are offered at our senior high schools, but these courses are open to all students, right? So first, we want to ensure that our partner high schools have the ability to recruit and then grow the maximum number of students that they can. But these courses are open to the general Compton College population. The next program is our Compton Early College High School, where these students may earn an intersegmental general education transfer curriculum hopefully they can see at the end of their Compton Early College studies, where they also have the opportunity to, and then kind of associate of arts and general studies. Several students also end up committing in several units to also for additional A A degrees as well. These courses are open to all students at Compton Early College specifically. I want to take a moment so that I can go over some of that data that we have reported on this slide. What you'll see on here is our nine through twelve grade grade levels, where you will see two different barcodes. And these will be the same barcodes that are displayed across all of the different slides. So the numbers that are displayed in blue are students that are officially registering courses, where the numbers that are reported in red are those registration attempts. So one thing that I do want to highlight is that a student can have multiple different registration attempts based on the different courses that they are submitting registration requests for, right? An example of this will be a student that submits a registration request for English and math. So again, those numbers are reported accurately on here. So we have been consistently growing in this area. In fall twenty twenty-three, our ninth grade population was at a hundred and fifty-two. As of right now, our ninth grade population at Compton Early College is a hundred and sixty-two students, so we're up by ten. And then for our tenth grade, our fall twenty twenty-three class was a hundred and fifty-two. This year, we're up at a hundred and sixty-six, so up fourteen students. In fall twenty twenty-three, our seventh grade population was a hundred and twenty-two, where this year, fall twenty twenty-four, we're at a hundred and forty-one. And then our twelve grades were up, uh, to a hundred and thirty-four this year. So you'll see that overall, we have a total enrollment of five hundred and eighty-one students at Compton Early College, registering and a thousand and thirty-seven registrations. Bye. And then I am going to highlight now our eighty-two eighty-eight or our CPAC pathways. So what this is, is essentially a series of college courses that may lead to unidentified guided pathway. These courses are offered at our, the local high schools that we have this, um, partnership with, and they're integrated into the student's regular high school schedule. So these students can take that class either in first period or at the end of their regular high school day. For these courses, they're close to other students, meaning that they cannot enroll if they are not in that specific program. Some of the participating districts that we have this eighty-two eighty-eight program with is Compton Unified, Paramore Unified, and then Wood Unified. Our next, um, now I'm going to highlight each individual, um, high school within the eighty-two eighty-eight program. So you'll see on here that we have Compton Unified, who is on the night get see pathway. What you see listed on those bars are the numbers for every specific high school that we have at Compton Unified. The first one being Compton High School, second being Centennial, and the third one being Delengas High School. Again, you see that we have several students submitting registration requests. And then the students in the right actually being students that have previously started the process to do dual enrollment, but unfortunately at some step away, meaning that they either were not able to obtain consent on time or counselor consent, were not able to officially register in those courses. For this specific slide, I do want to point out that for our three districts, in fall twenty twenty-four, we have increased by thirty-five students at Compton High School, at Delengas High School, we increased by nineteen students. And at Centennial High School, we've increased by twenty-eight students. Slide. This slide is our eighty-two eighty-eight agreement at Inwood Unified. So these numbers represent our numbers at Inwood High School and Vista High School. What you see again listed in the blue are a number of students registered. Number of students across Inwood High School and Vista High School is a hundred and thirty. Um, and then the students who initiated the process was at a hundred and forty-six. So we retained a large portion of those students. What you'll see listed all the way to the far right are our students at Vista High School. And then in the middle is our students that are in our afternoon college programs. Slide. This is our Fireball High School. So you'll see to the left side of that, that we have a hundred and thirty six students at eighty two eighty eight programs at Fireball High School. And we have on the right side, um, a hundred and twenty five students that are participating within. And then lastly, we have our eighty two eighty eight program at Paramount Unified. This is specifically with our administration of justice pathway. These students have indicated an interest in receiving an administrative. Administration of justice degree at the end of their eighty two eighty eight tenure. What you'll see listed on here are our programs at two different high school sites. The program on the right is our Paramount High School senior campus. And our program on the right is our Paramount West Campus, which is our ninth and chain. So this year, I do want to highlight that we increased our eighty two eighty eight programs within the district by forty one students. This also is largely due to the fact that we are offering dual enrollment courses at one of this and at obviously high school, which are also included in these. Next slide. And then lastly, we have our California Academy of Math and Science Instructional Service Agreement. These students are on a pre-engineering instruction route where they are earning units for their, um, certificate in engineering technician. We last year offered thirteen courses to CAMs. This year, we actually increased our courses to fifteen. What you see in that table down below is the number of students that started the process for dual enrollment, which is about five hundred and thirty six students. And then on the left side, you see the number for students that have successfully registered. One thing that I do want to point out here is that although we have four hundred and thirty nine students being counted in this. This does not include the number of registrations that they have. So we are actually increasing in course registrations and I do have that updated number here. Where we have students enrolled in eight hundred and eighty six section and eight, representing eight hundred and eighty six course registration. Four hundred and thirty nine students. We do want to essentially state that not only are they enrolled in these engineering courses, but they're also taking the advantage to enroll in several other courses across the high school as well. Across the campus. Alright, so then I am going to touch on now what our course registrations look like within our partner districts. So the slide goes over our accurate counts for the fall twenty twenty four semester. So you'll see Compton Unified composing of Centennial High School at a hundred and ninety two course registrations. Compton High School at two hundred and twenty course registrations. The Mingus High School at two hundred and eighty course registrations. And lastly, our Compton Early College High School, which has a thousand and fifty seven active course registrations. For Lingwood Unified, we have broken a down between Fireball and Lingwood High School, where Fireball represents a hundred and fifty one course registrations. And Lingwood Unified, a hundred and seventy three course registrations. For Paramount Unified, which includes Paramount High School, both senior campus and west campus at a hundred and eighty three. And then lastly, our California Academy of Math and Science Instructional Service Agreement students. So the students that are officially in engineering courses at five hundred and thirty six for a grand total of two thousand seven hundred and ninety two course registration. Alright, so now I'm going to take even deeper into dual enrollment data. By highlighting some of the institutional set goals that we met for the last academic year. So for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four academic year, you saw that dual enrollment represented a very large portion of our population at two thousand three hundred and twenty one. Or thirty one point five percent of our enrollment. And then what you see listed on the bottom is the grand total for the overall enrollment at Compton College, which includes the general student population. So on the little check mark though, you'll see that we met our institutional set goal of thousand five hundred and eighteen students. And then this briefly touches on what that dual enrollment account looks like divided by gender and ethnicity. This was a request made to the board last, um, board presentation of November twenty twenty three. So we wanted to ensure that you all had accurate data reported to you based on some of the feedback that we received last year. So you'll see that female students compose about a thousand two hundred and ninety nine of those course registrations, whereas male students represent nine hundred and seventy two. What you also see is that we have progressively grown dual enrollment for both female and male students consistently over the past five years. What you listed on the bottom portion of that are the different, um, ethnicities that we report out to, right? So for black or African American students, they are representing one hundred and seventy nine of those. Course registrations and then for Hispanic, Latino, a thousand eight hundred and twenty nine. And all other ethnicities, who may be those that often go unreported, right? Or uncounted, meaning that students hold multiple different ethnicities, we have those represented at three hundred and thirteen. And then the next slide goes over some of that success and retention data. But first, I do want to define what the success is versus what, um, retention is here at Compton College. So for the success rate, we have it as the percentage of students who receive the passing rate in a course. Where the retention rate is the percentage of students who do not withdraw or drop courses, right? So you'll see for the dual enrollment success that we closed out in the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four academic year. We had it representing at eighty two point one percent, whereas the general Compton College population is succeeding at sixty six percent. So we're seeing that dual enrollment students do perform much higher on average with their success rate. For our dual enrollment retention, we go out twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four with ninety three point eight percent. In comparison to the general Compton College population of eighty four point nine. So again, both the success and retention rate are very strong indicators that we are succeeding in our dual enrollment program. But that we're also retaining the students that are initiating more interest in it. The next slide goes over again, something a little bit deeper for the gender and ethnicity. So what you see represented on these graphs are the dual enrollment success in comparison again to the general population. So you'll see that females perform much higher on average than the general student population as well as males. Black or African American as well and Hispanic, Latino. I do have, um, some several points to make regarding this specific table. The highest data points that I do want to focus on is that we grew in male enrollment from seventy six percent to eighty one percent, which was due to a five percent increase. And then for black or African American, we grew from sixty nine percent to seventy five point two percent, representing a six percent increase within the past academic year as well. And the next data touches on that retention aspect. So you'll see again that, um, females are performing, um, at a much higher rate than, um, the general population as well as. Males, and then we also have black or African American performing at a much higher rate than, um. The general population as well as Hispanics with the highest rate that we're comparing it, say percent, which is black or African American population. And then what we have on here was again an ask from the Board of Trustees from November twenty twenty three board presentation where they asked us to represent. What the dual enrollment council looked like in comparison to our high school, right? So are we actually enrolling a representative population of students that in comparison to the high school? So you'll see two graphs on here. The left side represents the dual enrollment male participants in comparison to our high school partners' male population. And on the right side, you'll see our high school partner female participant, um, in comparison to our high school female population. So you'll see that on the left side, we represented, um. Two percent of the black or African American students, which is represented at six percent throughout our high school partners. Where in contrast, we were representing thirty two percent of that forty four percent for our Hispanic and Latino students in comparison to our dual enrollment program. And their high school population. To the right side of that, you'll see the female population where we are representing a much higher, um. Percentage for Hispanic, Latino, and then, um, a similar percentage for both black or African American student females. And then we would not be able to do this without the invaluable support that our dual enrollment specialists support us with. So again, every single week they do manage early alerts. They have the responsibility to log on to CRM advise. Download list of available alerts that are updated either weekly or daily. They not only digest the alerts, right? So do that qualitative data, see where their students are struggling and find those support systems. But they also communicate with our partner districts where some of their students are either falling behind. Or where some of their students are also succeeding so that we again provide that proper support. The next thing that they also do is refer students to tutoring and academic services. They also refer students to basic needs support. Once they've identified that a student may not have their basic needs met. Or a student has disclosed that they have other worries in their personal life that may be affecting their academic progress. They also partner with support, um, programs and services on campus. They do registration checks where they're supporting their high school partners with knowing active course registrations as well as active point withdrawals. And they do this to weekly high school sites as well. And then, um, some of the early outreach that we began in the spring twenty twenty four, um, was providing middle school outreach. So we began to do a lot more in-class presentations with our elementary schools that went all the way up to sixth grade. So that they knew that once they started middle school, that was something that their students could benefit in. And we wanted to highlight that we had a lot of amazing programs here at Compton College, mostly STEM and esports. Who began to do structured campus tours where we brought their students on campus. At the main vision, what it looked like to be on a college campus and to be sitting in a college classroom. For some students, they identified that esports was the main reason why they would choose to come to Compton. Because they cannot believe that we have such an updated facility that was so amazing that we created here. The next thing is that we began to send out, um, parenting bargain letters, um, from Dr. Curry, who we know does send letters, um, to encourage students to. This is spring twenty twenty four, and we have done that periodically over the past couple of semesters. And then lastly, we are working on recruitment videos where we want to offer the same level of knowledge and support. Of cross different, um, populations of students where we are targeting Spanish speaking families to also receive the same guidance and support that I asked you of. And that concludes my presentation and opens it up for questions. You got any questions?
Um, first of all, thank you for the wonderful presentation. Um, just a couple of questions overall, and it doesn't have to be too many. What are the different courses offered in the various different versions of the program? So like, we separate your eight with twelve, I'm assuming that strictly online, you don't have like, you know, Facebook them, so they can basically qualify to take it. Um, for the afternoon college, you mentioned the six year schools. So, you know, what schools are those? But, but for any of these, what are the core courses that, that the students are taking? Um, which is really great for these numbers. And then the, the, the other question was when we saw the performance, uh, consistently by gender and ethnicity, I think on page twenty four. For those students who are in dual enrollment versus our traditional or quote traditional. Compton College population, what might we attribute that to, right? It's a class size, is it? What? Um, so again, not for right now, just.
Um, I can see your first question, I can answer. So students again do have the opportunity to take any class that they choose, um, as one of the physical education course, right? So for regular eight with twelve students, they largely make up a lot of our numbers. Because these students can participate in any course, even if they're an eighty two eighty eight student, if they're a student taking afternoon college, right? So students can hold multiple different identities with our dual enrollment programs. Once a student starts that eighty two eighty eight pathway, right? Where they're taking those high school classes during their regular high school site. This student can still decide to take classes through afternoon college. And they can even go an extra step where they decide to take classes either over the weekend, right? Where they may come onto campus or take those classes online. So again, it really, um. It really comes down to what the student is interested in. We've seen a lot of requests for students taking maybe math one eighty or even things like geology. Means pretty much that sparked their interest. So it's something that's offered outside of the regular high school day, then they're going online or asking our dual enrollment specialists to help them find a class that fits their needs or their interests.
Their campus, their own courses, and then they can go above and beyond and make extra courses. And only one program, do I, I remember, I think, is closed, that's CAMs, right?
Well, they come over and, and the eighty two eighty eight, um, if they are in the whole four days program, then they can talk to them before, but they cannot take classes throughout. And then to your second point, first, success and retention. I do think that majority of the success and retention is because again, our dual enrollment specialists do have a very special position. And I believe he's the only one in California where we're ensuring that we support our dual enrollment programs through full time personnel. Where again, they have their weekly site visits. They have agenda items that they discuss with the stakeholders offsite. But then again, we also have our monthly work group meetings and our partners meetings where we discuss challenges that we may face. Both technical or instructional, and then we tackle those challenges head on to see where can we move forward to or where can we update some of those programs as well.
I do capacity, especially, but it would be good, um, for future conversation to see where some of those. Services and support or frequency, whatever we see is the differentiator. Um, we have wonderful students support already, to see what things coming up for you.
We implemented a customer service survey where we highlighted the main roles in my office from there. That customer service survey highlights the role of dual enrollment specialists as well as provide students with a survey. A comment box saying this person supported me with so and so, I found this beneficial. Or seeing what is the actual support that led them to succeed either in your course or in your program. So we can provide. Your program review best to understand. And you'll get a letter about that.
Yeah, um, so regular phase three twelve, that means, um, students outside of like, one with unified, Compton Unified, or what more, what does that mean?
So again, the regular eight with twelve is any student that is taking any Compton College course, um, at my physical education. Thank you, Heather, and you opened up this slide. But again, the main takeaway is that a student can be an eighty two eighty eight student as well as an afternoon college student and a regular eight with twelve student. There is unit limitations for every individual courses, um. Once a student, um, does petition to take twelve minutes or over, then they do assume things and all other, um, off the allocated, which applies to students at either a unit and other.
And this, or are we making it somehow like accessible for like, let's say. Residents that live within Compton Unified, Lingwood Unified. But their children go to a, to a new school or they, they take their kids where they commute to work, like, so we do have students that will.
Yes, and I can actually, um, you know, um, today I responded to five different, um, high schools that want to start a dual enrollment program. So we can refer, we'll be getting a lot of those, you know, any requests. Um, but they largely represent like some Catholic school, charter, some charter schools in the area or even other high schools that we may not, um. Be accepting right now. One thing that I'm also doing is working on the backend and seeing where some of these applications are coming in. So that if you see that we have fewer areas, that maybe we don't have some of these M O Us with or the data sharing agreement. See how we can tackle them because we are seeing such high registration levels as well.
I, I, I just think, uh, I was tapped and trusted that was, she said, but, um. I, 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 I think, uh, trust you, I think that's a place where your question is where I see expansion to the moment as a potential opportunity. Is how you work with K twelve students who live in this to go to school in five minutes. And what does that look like? What was the strategy to encourage those to go into the moment? I think that's a potential growth area for us as based to build a moment. But the question will be how you think, how you play this. What is how you determine, how you determine, is it through, uh, disvowing their, this intention for promotion to residents about in the moment or some outside of these. But I do see that as a potential growth opportunity.
At the thirty, we performed at one time. Doing to Europe in the dish, but went to Compton, so they could not take the classes or they weren't funding.
Yeah, that was to be a part of problems at when we first started, it was, we had to be a graduate from our, uh, first time student from one of our local high schools and we take that policy. And we opened it up. But I just do see that dual enrollment, uh, possibility, because you're going to have some students who don't go to school within, uh, K twelve school districts. Or even private schools in that district. So how are you able to act, recruit as an individual? And get them to work with their high school with the form completed, but they'll be able to take classes. Like you see that as an opportunity, not only to build on the inner district, but also statewide and nationally. Because you have some students who are running bust out, right? And you have some students who parents will take them to themselves. So how do you encourage those to build a moment, especially when you have the online option for them as well? So I do see that as a potential growth, I don't know how to look structurally, of how you provide that support. Because it's, it's, it's a little random, right? And so how do you provide that support to students, uh, who are, uh, who write their books, they will live in the district, but not with school, uh, K eight district.
I want to thank Mr. Mario Williams for sitting there because I would not be able to pass such amazing graphs and data. If it weren't for his support.
That, that was very, very important, I kept saying. How long ago did we ask for that report like that?
One thing that I do want to highlight is that, um, I myself as an individual and in a role, make sure every single student is accounted. So when I tell you I check every single student's registration, I didn't.
No, that's, uh, it's evident, yeah. You can see your passion for what you're doing and thank you for the, uh. Listen, my, 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 everything that you're doing. That was a school that I gave to Dr. Curry. Was it a medium?
And.
So, okay, yeah, because I met that lady at a, at a event. And she said, well, they're all San Vito, and they was wondering why they weren't coming to. College, college with dual enrollment, they're going to Southwest. And they said, well, we're in the district, we need to come to you guys. So I gave that card to Dr. Curry so that you guys could. Oh, okay, good, yeah, because she, when I told her everything that we offer, she said, no, you know, I said, yes, we do. She said, we go.
So being true to the message.
Right, that's good, but thank you, thank you for your report, thank you, that was very, yeah. Yes, indeed, that's right, every time I see somebody, that's a good school. So, trustee, do you have a question?
No, thank you for the lovely report, thank you.
You got another question?
Do we offer courses like to all of our, um, theater schools or any of them during the summer? Like, how is that?
So afternoon college is offered to, um, students again, that marketing is that they would attend a summer course, which is what then indicates to the high school personnel that they either done an interest survey, right? So students would be making, then taking child development, psychology, and stuff like that. They submit their formal course request, and then from there, there are offered that number of courses. So then, um, we begin recruitment for the summer around April or May. Um, we first tackle with letting the high school partners know that there's an opportunity to have admission application workshops for students who may not have participated in dual enrollment yet. We tackle those students first to ensure that when they have their admission applications done, that they complete the rest of their dual enrollment process, um, through the dual enrollment system, which is now active. And then from there, follow-up, um, within the registered and those summer courses. And then we do have who was participating in winter invitation as well.
Just providing some of the courses to the stores have to give us through the information. Because I know some years that when my kids were, they had to first get something signed off before they could come.
So Title V regulation does state, and it was, um, updated briefly, um, in the past year that instead of having parents provide that consent, um, multiple different times that a student has indicated either a recent enrollment or dual enrollment courses, we now have officially implemented that the parents only need to do that consent one time or unless they revoke that consent for the students to actively participate in dual enrollment courses.
Thank you so much, Brian. Thank you.
We have one last presentation. Is the Compton College Special Resource Center. And the director is Allison.
So it's up to you, we'll be there, and then it's up to you to work better. Um, and I'd like to share just some information on our department, provide updates on our student data and just share some program goals. So our mission and vision, so our mission is to ensure equal access to education for students with disabilities by combining support services, accommodations, and advocacy, allowing students to achieve their academic, professional, and professional goals. And our vision is to foster inclusive and accessible learning environment where all students regardless of disability are empowered to participate fully and succeed in their educational journey. So we operate in compliance with several laws and regulations that provide that framework for creating an inclusive and supportive learning environment. So the Americans with Disabilities Act ensures reasonable accommodations and access for students with disabilities. Section five oh four of the rehabilitation act ensures that individuals with disabilities are not excluded from benefits of or subjected to discrimination in programs or activities, receiving financial assistance. And through the RSRC, we, uh, provide the appropriate accommodations to students with verified disabilities. Section five oh eight, um, focuses on ensuring that technology used by the institution is accessible to students with disabilities. And then Title V of the educational codes is what provides the framework for our DS programs and, um, operations and the guidelines for implementation. And of course, purpose, um, is our confidentiality and, um, we place a really high priority on student confidentiality. We'll make sure we don't disclose disability information, um, to anyone except who is qualified to, um, got that. Students, of course, can disclose that information if they like to, but we won't do that. Um, all these laws and regulations help to ensure that students who have a verified disability that impacts one or more major life activity resulting in educational limitation receive equitable access to all educational opportunities. So, um, we also see provide support services for students in the following disability categories. So we, um, provide services for acquired brain injury, um, attention deficit hyperactivity or ADHD, autism, visual disabilities, deaf and hard of hearing, intellectual disabilities, learning disabilities, mental health disabilities, other health conditions, and physical disabilities. So students apply to the program through, um, we have an aim portal, which is our database that we hold all of the students' information. It's also where students, um, communicate with their instructors and request for services. So they submit their verification, they apply through the aim portal, and they submit their verification of disability, and then schedule an intake appointment with one of our SRC counselors. It also reviews that documentation and utilizes an interactive process with the student to identify any educational limitations and approve of corresponding accommodations to ensure that they have that access to educational programs, services, and activities that allow them to just faithfully and succeed in their academic journey. Um, these accommodations, um, that a student may receive are listed here. Um, some of the most common accommodations used tend to be priority enrollment, uh, testing accommodations, and note-taking assistance, which is often, um, due to the assistive technology. Um, the most common services that we have are, um, academic counseling. So our counselors help students create their educational plans, uh, transfer, um, testing accommodation, or disability management, um, and, uh, the high-tech center, um, where they learn how to use assistive technology. But it does say personal counseling up there, but, um, really, that's just a very small part. If a student comes into our office and is experiencing mental health issues, we always like to connect them to maybe jobs where they can have access to a therapist. So here's some examples of our assistive technology that we have available. So we have the read and write, just a literary soft software. Um, and this actually is on computers throughout the camp, throughout the college. Um, Kurzweil is also a like text-to-speech. Um, all students are able to upload like textbooks, and it'll read to them, and they can follow along, and it highlights what they're reading, so it supports their reading comprehension. Um, Glean is a note-taking app, um, and it's constantly evolving, but it provides students with audio and written transcript of class notes. What's really cool too about Glean, they recently added, um, um, Sprebio, so that students in STEM classes are able to kind of write in, uh, like the formulas or, you know, different chemistry symbols that are harder to pick up through audio. They also, um, have a, um, AI that generates test questions based on the material that's been recorded so that they can test where they are in their class and their ready for their exams. Um, we have additional, um, assistive technology in the, in the computer lab. We have different screen readers and magnifiers for students who might have more visual. Um, we have some other like assistive listening devices and things like that, um, available. And then the Ubi Duo is another communication device for students who are deaf and hard of hearing. Um, basically what it is, and it looks like a laptop, when you open it up, it has like dual, um, um, keyboards so that, um, individuals can talk to each other, be typing, fill in a instant chat. And we have that stationed in our office, but also in some other key locations, like the welcome center, and, um, it's available for like financial, like admissions and records. Some of our activities that we've done over the year, um, we have, um, education, our classes are educational development courses, thirty-seven and thirty-eight, um, which supports students who are, um, taking or interested in increasing their skills in English and math. Um, we have our go-to-transition event for high school students interested in pursuing higher education. So, um, that helps them to be able to come to campus and, um, gives them that sense of belonging and connection before they even enroll in college. So they're able to meet some of our staff, get a tour of the campus, and see what resources are available for them. Um, in the summer, we do our SRC one-on-one, which, um, this is for first, first students entering college for the first time or, um, just to be, uh, prepared for the activities of college, like utilizing our AIM and their accommodations that they're entitled to and how to use them and advocacy. And, um, so we just go over a lot of that, also some time management and other tips to get ready to semester. Um, we've hosted priority registration clinics this year, um, so that we can be, have our counselors on hand to help students to enroll in their classes during the priority registration, um, appointments. And we've also hosted some different study skills and our advisory board meeting. Um, so we're looking to always get more workshops to address students' needs. Um, looking at our student engagement, um, over the past academic year, we had eighty-six percent attendance rate with nine hundred fifty-three appointments taken. Um, counseling, educational plans, and intakes were the most common appointment reason codes. And additionally, eight hundred thirty-two accommodation requests submitted. So once, um, students are approved for those accommodations, there's a responsibility to, um, trigger that letter in their AIM portal so that it goes to their, um, the faculty, so that they're aware of what accommodations they, um, are approved to receive. Um, we also have been doing high school outreach, um, so we started that in the fall semester, and we will continue that into the spring. Um, we just want to make sure we're creating a smooth transition for students from high school to college, and there's a lot of differences between their accommodations that they receive and how they receive them. Um, so we want to make sure that they're prepared for that. And so looking at our student counts, so you can see over the past five years that our numbers are, um, pretty much back to where they were, um, pre-COVID. Um, so are the highest percentage of students fall into or learning disabilities, mental health, and other health conditions category. Um, however, we have seen an increase in numbers over the past years in our autism and ADHD categories. You can see they kind of have mirrored each other in their growth. Um, students are predominantly, um, Hispanic and African-American. And, um, we continue to see a high number of female than male students. And the majority of students are, as you can see, in the eighteen to the twenty-four age group. Although we do see a little rise, um, in the fifty-plus as well. So we're seeing the students' success rate increase each year. However, um, retention rate hasn't been as high. Um, and we see the students are also withdrawing from courses. Uh, the dashboard, the, yeah, dashboard also showed that a lower number of SRC students are obtaining degrees and certificates. But the certificate awards and, um, um, associate degrees for transfers are increasing. Um, so in this chart, we can see that Hispanic students have higher completion rates. And except for twenty-twenty-one, female students are completing degrees and certificates in a higher number than males. So as we look over, um, the, um, that's just, we've been able to develop some program goals to address areas. Um, so increase our high school outreach, a lot of the areas we've also been, um, getting requests for is for parents. So, um, we're going to start doing some parent information sessions because that transition from high school to college is also a transition and adjustment for parents as well. So we'll be having our first parent information at least at, um, high school in December. Um, we also want to collaborate more with educational partnerships, as, as, um, you just mentioned, we do enrollment increasing. Um, we still have, we do have students who, um, with disabilities who are also taking to enrollment, we want to make sure that they also are receiving their accommodations at the college, in their college courses. We want to see increased support efforts with, um, partnerships with tutoring center. Um, the Success Center has partnered with us and has provided some tutors that work in our office. So students are able to get that extended tutoring time with, with a tutor and just be able to be in our office. Um, now we have different community partnerships, um, you know, the, a representative, a counselor from the Department of Rehabilitation that comes to campus every week and opens up cases or just touches base with our students, um, in our office. Um, and we also, we're looking to expand, we have other, uh, educational development classes that we're not utilizing. But in addition to that, one thing we are doing is, um, our educational development classes have been online. And in the spring semester, we're bringing them to campus, so they'll be more in person, which I think will have, um, will be a more beneficial for our students and their learning modality. Um, then we want to increase the workshops that we've been dealing, seeing, um, just to give the students that support. Uh, re-engagement efforts, also, we want to hire, survey the students and find out, um, reach out to those students who are close to degree and kind of find out what's been going on so we can know how to address them and hopefully bring them back to campus. Um, and just collaborations for that transfer and clear readiness. We have a current transfer center, workforce development, college course, and TV programs. And, um, increased awareness and training across campus, um, do collaboration. Uh, I'm sorry, and increase awareness and training by providing opportunities for faculty and staff on best practices for supporting students with disabilities. Um, we want to continue to support counselors and, um, SRC staff through attending professional development opportunities. Um, so one, one area we need to prepare for the vision-aligned reporting that is coming, um, from the chancellor's office. Uh, so we have our aim portal where we're able to track the needed data for that vision-aligned reporting and to make sure we're ready for that. Um, and make sure all that our processes are streamlined. Um, and we'll continue to renew and update assistive technology, um, as well as offer training to students on the use of different equipment and apps. Uh, we are aim, um, database is also having a revision or, um, to another version, so we'll be doing that in the summer. Uh, and lastly, we, um, want to work on better soundproofing, our, um, SRC testing center, uh, to ensure it's a distraction-free use environment and, um, also plan to install cameras to increase the entirety of the testing environments.
Rachel, please do get any questions. Um, mainly the last one you just said, cameras for, for what exactly?
For our testing center room, so we make sure that, um, we're, and we want to make sure that faculty feel comfortable of having the students test in our office and just make sure we're protecting the integrity of the testing room we're operating.
No, I love the idea of the sound room, um, yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
No, 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 thank you so much for the presentation and for really outlining, like, the vast services just moving in the future, but what's in how, what kind of categories, uh, abilities, disabilities, or systems that we're thinking. And going back to students not being able to handle, uh, students, students are involved in the conversation or.
Yeah, so.
Ways and ways to find out what could. Thank you.
I, I wanted to say thank you for the presentation, it's very comprehensive. The, the, any question I have is, uh, uh, at the Special Resource Center, do you have like a, a, a space, like? Do the, the, the students that like utilize these resources, do they have a, a space there somewhere where they could just like? They, they, I guess, pass some time study or something, they, they, they don't want to be on part of, you know, the, the rest of the, I guess, uh, activities.
Sure, we do have our high-tech computer lab, so, um, we have about, um, ten computers in the lab. So we do have the students come in all the time, um, and just work in there. And, um, we do have some desk spaces too, where they can just kind of, uh, spread out their textbooks and study there as well. So there are some spaces available. Um, then we have some other computers that are available for, um, students who might have more visual needs. Um, that those computers have more, um, like Zoom text from as enlarged, um, screen, that screen, but the material on it is enlarged for them. So, so yes, there is. And then we have a tutoring room where there's, so if it's not being used for tutoring, students, they go in there as well.
Thank you.
Oh, no. Tell what you're talking about, about soundproofed in testing center. Is it next to a, another office that's a lot of noise? What are you talking about?
Yeah, so our testing center is within our, our SRC office, um, and it's, uh, has like windows around it. Um, but what we found is that we can't actually hear, um, we're right next to educational partnerships, and a lot of times we can hear them on the other side of the wall. So, um, we're looking. So, um, we're looking into, um, there's just like little sound, soundproofing squares that you can like put on the back of the wall. Um, and we've also seen some like window, um, because the windows kind of surround the outside closer our high-tech lab. So there are some different things you can put on the windows that can make them a little bit more soundproof.
Install testing set a camera system, what you're talking about, you, you want to put a camera inside the room.
Yep.
To watch them take the test, fire, you made a statement about the safety of the faculty. That's what, that's, no, 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 that's what picked up my ear, when you said the safety of the faculty. What, what do you mean by that?
Oh, I, I didn't, I didn't, I'm not, oh. Oh, I meant integrity, of the, the, to, um, to, um, so the faculty feels safe. Having us proctor their exam, that's what I meant, so that they, sometimes faculty, um, isn't sure if we're proctoring, so, um. We just want to make sure that this faculty feels comfortable with, um, us being able to proctor the exams outside of their classroom.
Because they don't know that you have a home, like, or, uh, uh, no, no, um, um, I gotta leave this one off. Then you want to ensure the safety of the faculty.
More comfort.
Is it, no, no, is it because of the students or is it because of the environment, well, I'm lost.
I think safety probably wasn't the right word, um, there were, to, to make sure faculty is comfortable having their students test outside of their classroom environment. That they know that we are going to uphold the integrity of their testing, um, their examinations by, uh, making sure that we're proctoring the exams. To the highest, um, yeah, yeah.
So, I got it, I'm a proctor, I'm just proctor for the state bar. Okay, so, and, and we have, we have people that take the state bar tests that are just like that this next year, all. People, all of that, you know, and so it. It just got, when you said that, because we are in a room with two people or either one person. And one could be ADHD and the other one could be not ADHD, but they're taking that test, they're the same, they're together. But I'm, you think that you're saying the same together, though.
Well, and it's your, I, I think, what, you're right, I, I have, um, heard situations where two, where the safety of the proctor as well. Um, I have heard of different situations that have happened, um, so yes, to your point, yes, I agree.
No, thank, yeah. I, I wasn't trying to make you nervous or anything, but when you said the safety of the faculty, I kept thinking about what not to use.
No, you're, I mean, you're absolutely right, yeah, thank you.
Okay, say, are the, is faculty adept at being acted as a proctor when given a test? So, you said you want, oh, you know, well.
I, I, but, I mean, I did, we, we have to talk back up on that question, I, I, I think. The concern in regards to testing and testing outside the classroom, so maybe any concerns that faculty might have. Regardless of your test, your proctor, in another area, for the faculty or not, in that, but we'll follow back up on that question and also raise this to extent.
Okay. I'm just saying, I'll leave it alone.
Right, I, I, I do, I do, I do think it warrants a follow-up to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are now at, we are at consent agenda. Dr. Curry, oh, wait, sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Dr. Little, second by trustee Ramos. Uh, Dr. Curry, are there any revisions to the consent agenda? Trustees, do you have any consent items that you want to discuss or to be pulled or technically discussed, that they want to, and we can still vote for it all in one?
No.
Uh, trustee Thomas, I mean, student trustee Thomas.
No, man, no.
Dr. Little?
No.
Trustee Ramos? And none for you? No. Welcome. Let me know. So now we are at thirteen action items. Thirteen oh one. Administrative Services, Comptel Committee College District Resolution Number eleven nineteen, eleven dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-four A. Budget transfers, augmentations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Second. And we have any discussions, student trustee Thomas?
No discussions.
Dr. Little, no, thank you. Trustee Robinson?
No discussion.
No discussion, no. Alright, y'all, I can tell my energy is gone, I'm sorry. May, we have the. Thank you so much. It's okay. We getting there? Alright, thirteen oh two, Administrative Services Proposition Thirty.
Promote.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Are there any, uh, discussions, student trustee Thomas?
No. No, man.
Dr. Little?
No question.
Ramos, no. None for me? Place your online vote.
The unanimous yes votes.
Thirteen oh three. Administrative Services Contracts Over One Hundred and Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred. Oh. Comptel Committee College District Resolution Number for eleven dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-four B. C B E Office Solutions Sharp Electronics Corporation, can I have a motion?
No.
Do we have a discussion, trustee Thomas?
No, man, no.
Dr. Little?
One quick question.
Okay.
Dr. Curry, for the lease agreement, how, how many years and what is it all covered?
It's for the next five years, and it covers all our printers and copy machines in all areas except for the print shop.
How many printers are in the print shop, like, like, is it, how many, like, the total number, I'm sure is, you know, this family number right now.
Print shop is not included.
No, saying how many, yeah.
How many machines total?
Minus the print shop machine.
Uh, it's including in the order, so.
And that maintenance and all that.
Yeah, everything's included.
But you're saying five years?
Yes, five years, yeah.
Is that customary timeframe? I know it's a five-year agreement.
Yeah, that's when we had five years, and we kept, we, we extended it, and so the staff went there. So the staff went, uh, actually, my, since those are chief, uh, technology officer. Was working with, uh, Randy, uh, in his office for the last several months, he didn't quote, so he would have different firms. And you have a copy of the, uh, bids that were submitted, and so I can use it order from a, another machine that we have.
So what, um, I think, uh, the quantities are to the left, right?
Right.
Two fifty. Three twelve. Four hundred, four thousand?
No, 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 because some of them are just finished, it's, it's about seventy minutes.
Oh, a hundred and six.
Those are kind of our finished machines and all that.
So. So I did the math, a hundred and seventy for six hundred and fifty thousand, so that's about average.
There's also a sheet with pricing. In comparison, it's sixty.
Okay, I'm just thinking, in five more years, it's gonna happen, have that same thing, or one more, okay.
Yeah, but we, we're actually on the same.
Right. Not doing it for, for sixty bucks.
That's how we do it, we may, we may, when I first arrived in this position, we had to, we had no, the printers were not organized under one company. So you had different departments printing, they used different types of printers, and so that's when we had a contract with Xerox. Now, this was a new contract with Sharp, which was a better deal than when Xerox related along. And so they will replace the Xerox machines with their machines, and we're excited about this opportunity.
No question.
Stephanie, one's yes vote.
Thirteen oh four, Administrative Services Contracts Over One Hundred and Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred.
Who is that, Dr. Little? Thank you.
Oh, okay. Go on. Do we have any discussion, trustee Thomas? Student trustee Thomas? Um, this is thirteen oh.
Yes, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm here, um, will that be extended hours?
No, so this, we have a mental health contract with them, we were hard the, uh, program they offered regards to mental health. They're providing a twenty thousand dollar grant to the college, so that grant will be able to, be able to support some programming, so that ten thousand dollars, I mean, two million, thirty thousand. This is actually, increase the contract was a hundred fifteen thousand that we were paying for, it actually gave us twenty thousand dollars for us to participate in the.
Dr. Little?
So it's just, just to clarify, it's for December thirteenth, isn't it?
Yes, I know, I'm sorry, it was for the October nineteenth, yeah. And December thirteenth, no, it was just the first bid was October nineteenth, and the second bid was December, December thirteenth.
Trustee Ramos? No questions? Please place your online vote. Thirteen oh five, Dr. Curry.
So this is a contract, I have to introduce it, so as, as you know, that, uh, Comptel College was the first to work with this contract to be able to have student housing built on our campus. And so we went out to bid, um, and the bids came in in late October, and we wanted to work to bid as low as we possible bid into Bernard Brothers. Uh, for this contract, the goal is to make the project complete by twenty twenty-seven, and the amount is back to the city sixty-nine, sixty-five, forty-seven one nine million dollars to this project. And the goal is for the project to be done on time and on budget. And I recommend. So.
Do we have a discussion, trust, student trustee Thomas?
Um, no.
We, we talking about it, I don't have any questions, but that's, I don't know.
Okay, Dr. Little?
Um, just really quickly, they're referred to as an employee-owned company. Do we have any more data on them, like, in front of their competition ownership?
We give the information what we want.
So, oh, you like the call out?
Their representatives are here to ask that question.
Oh. Are you a call out?
So, can you stand up and introduce yourself at the podium, please?
Hi, I'm Eileen Marton, I'm Director of the Subban and Friar, the Chief and Clerk for Bernard's Company.
Cameron, there are lots of far executives, put your hands.
What was your question, man?
To clarify, what is employee-owned, what, what do you all consider that to mean, and what is, where do you define, it's under ownership or leadership?
So our, our company, employee-owned meaning, every single employee that's employed by Bernard's, um, has ownership and shares in the company. So it is, it's about seven years, um, turned over to the boys, used to be owned by three brothers, Bernard's brothers. Um, seven years ago, they decided to retire, and instead of selling the company, they sold it, uh, to the boys. So every year we get shares in the company based off of, um, projects and, um, profitability, um, positions and, um, bonuses.
How would the sector is meet, so it's. Uh-oh, we're all, almost, we're, we're, I'm turning her into a TV. And, and which part of the demographic? You don't have any data on gender or ethnicity?
I, I can get you that, that information, um, I would say we are an extremely diverse company. Um, and, and I would say it occurs naturally, or something. But, but we'll definitely share that information.
Have a separate division for that, but we have to say that.
Thank you, mom.
First off, to get started, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it, it, it definitely enhanced, uh, because they were not offering, I didn't know who they were. They weren't engaged about how they're gonna do our housing and their company on, and our employer.
And, and then just to, 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 to this, one is sixty-five, seventy-four, nine, there's a lot of.
Yes, oh, but yes, of the nine years.
Yeah, but I'll also say that, um, the project as, as noted in the board is funded with the student. Affordable, affordable student housing funds from the state, and so this is a part of that, so that, which was by board, and it's something eighty point three million dollars to support. Uh, this project, so that'd be a thing for with bond funds, global bond dollar. And so that's a misconception, but, um, some of this was within our community, so I think so.
That, that, thank you, yeah.
And it's also important to note that, um, student affordable housing, that's just the key word, affordable.
We have a lot of other institutions in our county, which means they're not being able to return the next semester strictly because of housing.
Yes.
Because they just cannot afford, we already know about the unhoused, and it may not necessarily be outside, but, you know, couch surfing, sleeping in one's car. So I think, again, to Dr. Curry's point about the source of money, but the pool of the beneficiary of this housing, I may, it needs to continue to be clarified.
Place your online vote.
We voted for.
That being unanimous, yes votes, with that being unanimous, yes, when did we break ground?
I made space for the trustees.
Sure, we're, 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 there's some, we have to do a couple of things with our source company, bring that contract to board, so I'm hopeful sometime in December. The groundbreaking is not early January, but they will be mobilizing, it's sometime in December, also work will be started in December, if that's right.
Ready, also, great, great business with you guys.
That change orders.
No change orders.
And no, no override.
No override, I'm sure it gonna be looking. Both laws are responsible, bitter.
Well, it's gonna just be for them to get it done right, because that, I didn't get paid, that's the truth. Hey, you guys.
Oh, thirteen oh six. Facilities, planning and development contracts over one hundred fourteen thousand five hundred. Okay, Nova something and inspection services, so-called D V A Universal Engineering Sciences. Go on. Do we have any discussion, trustee, no, student trustee, no?
I mean, I'm trying to click on it, see.
This thirteen oh six, I, I, I'm, oh, oh, I know you are, you're.
No, no questions, okay.
Dr. Little?
No question, um, no question, but just to put, this is the consultant.
Yeah, this, as raised inspection.
Yeah, okay, around the inspection, so they'll partner with our building for, uh.
I mean, they're a part of the team that works on site, and, uh, they're a part of the inspection.
But it's an additional mine, uh, separate cost, that's customary?
Yes, yes, it is funded with the student affordability, this is student powered, it's state affordable, affordable student housing.
And you don't like both?
Thirteen oh seven, facilities, planning. Thirteen oh seven, facilities, planning, and development contracts over one hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred, the Anaheim Boot, T A G. Can I have a motion? Do we have any discussions, Student Trustee Thomas?
Dr. Little, good point, are they independent from, again, the team is another consultant team?
Correct.
And then it's that passing even throughout, so it's just the different phases, as we get to different phases of inspection.
Yeah, but in terms of record, there's a sign up on the project, and so they had to expect for inside, as construction.
Okay, so it's over the, the years, this six twenty four is over the years.
Six twenty four, over the years.
Okay.
Dusty Ronalds?
Dr. unanimous, yes folks.
Thirteen oh eight, facilities, planning, and development contracts over hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred, this is the amendment. Priest Construction Inc., Instruction Building Number Two, Project Amendment Number Five. Do we have any discussions, Student Trustee Thomas?
No discussions.
Dr. Little? Good question, honestly, we're switching services, and this is yet another amendment tied back to what we, we just passed. Do you have? Or run over, where we can?
In the housing project?
Yeah.
No, we, yeah, we have, we have some money set aside for overs, as this is that project. This one relates to our construction building two, as we try to close out the building, and so our goal is to hopefully complete it by December fifty first. Uh, but this is one of our project that was, that we had issues regards to timing and condition. But we do have money set aside in the budget for the housing regards to, uh, to the project that we go to over. I've instructed the staff, we need a little number, what the budget is, and we're gonna monitor that budget, and our goal is not to go over it. The key is that the project, the student housing has to be completed on time, and the words have to be done on time and better.
Okay, so that was my question in terms of this amendment, that he has in our draft. Coverage to where not just the financial, but if it does not, that we have remedy, like we cut the money for something is being.
There, there's, I would say, I would say that protection regards to insurance, and then also is the protection regards to construction firm having a bond as well. Uh, but the goal was to make sure that everyone understood the budget, and also understand that we don't want to see change orders as this is the project, and really hold individuals accountable. And so with this project, we have a fixed number of what the budget is, and we have to manage that budget, and we can't, we can't anticipate this from the initial funds, because our budget is single thing, is one number. And I'm talking about that discussion last item, regards to what the state wants to do with this house. So it's a fixed number.
But you can add five, fifteen, thank you so much.
Ronalds? No. Please your online vote. Please.
If you unanimous, yes folks.
Okay, fourteen, discussion slash action. Fourteen oh one. So that's great, hope to be doing this action, okay, thank you.
So this is the year the item that we're working on for the Board of Trustees relates to board meetings for the twenty twenty five year. We included, uh, the calendar of holidays, and also gave the schedules of what please back the bike, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Uh, in the month of January and February, there's some changes because those updates and holidays, and they're trying to work through that. Uh, going to provide that for the Board of Trustees, to review at the next month, the board has to select a day. Days for the regular scheduling, we also put days in for the retreat, uh, for the Board of Trustees, taking their account, expected to retreat for a week, and so we left that Monday to retreat. And also, I thought it's in the, in the winter, and also maybe some time in the end. And so that's here for information for the board, and we'll bring these back next month for discussion, we have a discussion before that.
No, we play, I discussed it next month.
Item fourteen point zero two is a draft of the Board of Trustees' presentation and report schedule. Uh, we're trying to, you know, keep the reports presentations to two a meeting. Uh, tonight is three because of the dollar trip, now the requirement of, of the dollar trip was to be able to give presentation to the board. But we're trying, we're working on presentations, try to keep it to two per meeting, um, and really, just really look at our presentation report to the board, and also what reports. So just give you a draft of the reports and presentation for next year. There's some simply the board, go back to C, let it know, and we talk about it for next board.
But the current April, July, and September have three reports.
Actually.
So you know that not all parties can, and even, uh, you know, ready.
So April. April, you have the budget workshop, so you have a presentation on the, on the, on the agency, you have a, a goals from here, and the goals and the budget workshop are actually together. And then June, you have the facilities master plan, the updated budget, and yet you have a presentation on eighty seven five. You're a credit. September is just a, is a, the final budget presentation, but it's a public hearing, it's not a presentation. Item fourteen point zero three, as we preparing for our meetings with our elected officials, we have our report cards for, as last month, we gave a report card to trust areas. Now we have the Assembly, Congressional, State Senate, and also Civilly, uh, officials, uh, report cards with their data. So this is a prepare for our meetings, and with our less than meetings that are happening in January. Fourteen oh four is our conference and master plan, also include our mission statement for the hours. Uh, I do want to say thank you to Amari Williams and the leaders effort as the Dean of District Effectiveness. Uh, our goal is to bring back the, uh, another draft of the document for approval. There will be some modifications to this document, uh, regards to some of the goals, just some clarification with the rest of the language that's being utilized, but also our facilities master plan. Uh, one, one change they're recommending is instead of the helps, the, the community health center being located where the current gym is at, was actually moving to parking lot A at the entrance of campus. So that the community could be able to walk on the campus, be able to utilize that facility, but then also look at it as a park. But where the current gym is at, instead of having the community health center there, there's be a, a parking lot, but also give a space for potential new good. So that's one change. Let me think about it. Uh, item fourteen point zero five, this one is very important, we, we've been working a lot with the, uh, Department of Finance, the California Community College Chancellor, all the grants of student housing. So it's just to give you a sense of what this means. So this item provides you with the background information about the student, student housing, and, and the funding for the grant program that completed what this plan is. However, uh, and, and due to the state budget and the deficit, uh, the state shifted the financing for the approved projects to a local lease revenue box. So we already received the eighty point three million dollars for our projects. So at some point, uh, this year, the state would do a switch, they would say, we give you your balance that you have for the meeting, and then we give another set of cash to support the project and pay it off. However, the state will be paying back that money from a bond, so the state will borrow money for to complete all the, uh, student housing projects. Company will be, have to turn some money in, based on organic construction, then give us that money back in cash from the bond. However, in order to do that, we have to have a lease, uh, we have to have a lease agreement with the state as relates to, uh, the student housing facility. And so we've been working with the Department of Finance, the California Community College Chancellor, and what that might look like. The one issue that we have right now, uh, is relates to this, that we have to renegotiate our contract with Major Baseball, because in their contract, there's be, it's the language choice. Where we talk about the company moved out of district premises, the premises for student housing were actually leased out to the state Chancellor's office. So we need to exclude that area from student housing from the agreement that they have in Major Baseball. And so we work with our legal counsel on that part, to get that language included in that amendment for Major Baseball. And I remember Major Baseball this morning, and they have a better understanding how that works, and our goal is to bring that back forward sometime in January and February of twenty twenty five. So it's just changing the way funding is done for student housing.
With the timeframe, when we give the money back, and we give it back.
I have no idea.
Not gonna delay.
I have no idea. So we, and, and here's the thing, is that they're still trying, they're working through this process, and this has been happening for over a year, and they're trying to work through this process. The good part about it is we are at the castle here. And so, you know, my joke that I told to the Department of Finance is that we might finish the project by the time they were stripped away, right? But that was a joke, I don't know their timing, because there's a lot of things that they've worked through of how this will work. And so the, the part that they asked us for was about the Major Baseball contract, and so that was engaged that we had within a couple of weeks ago, regarding some big steps, so we're trying, we're trying to solidify that with Major Baseball.
We'll have the money in hand, so we can pay our deal, and keep our budget.
That's, 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 that's correct, we're not gonna give money back while we're, we're gonna continue to make sure this will be a pay. And so we'll continue to watch the cash flow on the project, so when we get money back, we watch the cash flow to make sure everyone's getting paid.
And, and Major League Baseball did not access to, um, renew their contract or extend their contract.
Basically, baseball, we're gonna, at this moment, we're not in a position to renegotiate the contract, the rest of twenty twenty eight, all we're looking at is looking at our current agreement regards to the work premise, and what is the site for them. And this says company called District Purpose, and we're, we're saying that that once area is not included in that contract.
We'll figure it out, make sure, because sometimes we do, you know, buy this loan, thank you.
So just want to make sure you have that information up there. We also provide you updating on Compton College Enrollment, uh, fourteen point zero six, we, today we had a campus like meeting, we talked about enrollment. You can see our enrollment continuing to increase, uh, we're doing very well. Uh, this semester, we're also doing well for winter, it's, uh, Dr. Berger talks about the spring data, because the numbers are significantly increased of, over five hundred percent. But the cost of that, uh, compared to last year this time, we started with expansion to each earlier. And so, uh, we're looking good for enrollment, but we have to continue to push as we move forward. I'm really excited about our enrollment management plans, uh, we set aside a hundred thousand dollars for enrollment management. Uh, those plans are, are projects that people like to implement, they submit to, we have to be by this Thursday. But in the item, in the board item, we have the updated enrollment information in Compton College. You also have our five year F T L dot target there as well. We provide a lot of information to you, and we also provide information to you as well, about your call center, outreach and events, uh, all that information there. Any questions?
No.
Item fourteen point zero seven, uh, for the Board of Trustees, this is just our updated five year fiscal management plan, which we have been sharing with the planning budget committee and also council. This gives you a sense of where we're at budget wise for the next five years, as a Board of Trustees, you know, we really monitor our budgets for the next five years. I just want you to know what's included in the plan, uh, what, that is, some, some assumptions. We do assume that we will not be receiving cost of vision adjustments for twenty six, twenty seven onwards, due to the funding for, for California Community Colleges. No negotiating related items are included in the budget projections as related to expenditures. It does include withdrawal from our other post employee benefits, uh, for tourist, uh, entity, uh, investment trusts in twenty four, twenty five, and also for our personal terms in twenty forty five, and twenty five, twenty six. We continue to monitor our five year budget, and we continue to update as well, to get the season more information from the state of California as much to our budget. But I think it's very important for everyone to know that this is not only accreditation requirement regards to looking at five year projections, this is good for the district, continue looking at five year projections. When you're looking at staffing, looking at potential expenditures, and so that the board has to monitor, and a part of the, the leader's responsibility as well, uh, for the district to make sure that we gave this was solid. And so we really monitor this all the time, we're looking at it all the time, and I feel like every other month, actually every month, there's always some type of upbeat thing we do in the five year budget. Is there any questions? Item fifteen point zero one, twenty thousand, that's you.
Oh, okay, grant items, Administrative Services Grant. Whatever that is, the box, lost post status, can I say it right? Oh, okay, thank you. I'll send, Community College District, Lost Position. Okay. On behalf of the California Department of Social Services, California Early Childhood Digital Program, C E C M P grant number twenty three dash thirty, three oh nine nine. Do we have any discussions, Student Trustee Thomas? Dr. Little?
No.
Dusty Ronalds, I know, I had to get that name better. I'm thinking of Poseidon.
Online gives a drum like this.
That's our, yeah, wake us up, wow.
That's unanimous, yes folks.
Okay, fifteen oh two, Administrative Services Grant, Digital Promise Global. Can I get a motion? Do we have any discussions, Student Trustee Thomas? Dr. Little?
No discussion, just a quick question, we won't get the data year to year, right, for participation in this pilot?
Yeah, we were.
Trusty Ronalds? Dr. Little, no question, please play your online vote. Okay, board policies and administrative regulations, Dr. Curry will discuss the, so, no doubt. Just say, do anybody have anything to say about sixteen oh one, to shut this up, or do you have to go to each floor?
Okay, so highlight a couple of the quite up here.
Yes.
Yes, please.
And you gotta be back here at eight thirty, bro.
We haven't went this long meeting in a while. Haven't been there since.
Yeah, we're, we're done with this, like, consult with this right now, I didn't talk to you right now, so. Uh, items, I just want to, I got a couple of board policies, first of all, thank you to the faculty staff, and also administrators, mostly, uh, Dr. Sherry Berger, and Sylvia, and Missy, that we're having all this. Items, uh, board policy six, uh, that sixteen oh two, regards to district, this is just a, a review, uh, for us, what we're doing regards to district or person. This is the review of our po, policy for district and name of the changes. Board policies, uh, sixteen point zero three, board policy twelve hundred, our mission, this, we cleaned up this board policy, there's gonna be some additional work, a, a new, a new board policy associated with this one, which will be board policy twelve oh one, will be our strategic initiatives. But this one's a cleanup, so you see our new mission, and also our mission for this tissue is included from the college. Uh, sixteen point zero four, please put a record and a note that Trustee Calum gets to make questions, and a question is presented in the back ugly room, so that's, I, I like, as of minutes. But board policy sixteen oh four, we updated the board duties and responsibilities, added information from the board, uh, from C C L C, champion of this today as well. Uh, also too, we have other board policies that are to report, but I think the one I want to highlight before I give up the mic is, uh, board policy thirty seven fifteen, regards to intellectual property. We will be established in the task force, where our different attention will be looking at the, uh, procedures in accordance with the, accordance with the board policy thirty seven fifteen. And we're very, very much on top of our board policies.
Quick question, like, are you talking about faculty I P?
I know about faculty, and it's, yeah, this includes faculty and all substitutes. So we're, but we have to work on the, the board policy talks about a procedure that brings in all stakeholders, as based what that procedure looks like. And that's kind of clues to the board policies actually.
Any comment? One small thing for the mission, is that mission stated done?
Yes. Is there any change, is there any change in the board, the, the rating?
No, I was gonna say, the vision speaks to student learning and success, the first sentence of the, the vision, the first sentence of the mission talks about as being a resource. I just wanted it to be aligned.
There's a new mission statement.
I know. But it talks about as being a community resource.
Yeah, and so, so this has been through, uh, campus reviews, include that, said, but, but the resource was basically the, like, a, a community resource. Like, think about all the stuff that we brought, this resource we provide to students and our community, and so, uh, actually, I think, I think, everybody's right, because I like it.
I like it, I just think we do need to prep people when you think about educational institution, that is a re. I like it, I just think we do need to prep people when you think about educational institution, that it's a replanting of much broader and I think appropriately broader nuanced understanding of what a community college is. It is a anchor community resource. But also when people think about the mission of an educational institution, they generally want to see something right more of a vision where you speak to education. We do get to a little bit, so it's just a comment, not gotta be at all.
Can we look through the, uh, information section?
Yes, the eighteen.
Yeah, seventeen. So just one thing I would would highlight actually too. Uh, for the information section, there's a, there's an update on the audit of the counter in the state. I'm actually gonna bring forward to the board probably in January or February, an update on the properties. And some recommendations as late to the properties and next steps. Uh, we have two properties that, uh, will be taken lots. And we need to, we need direction from the board of what to do with these two properties. One is already been transferred, and the other will be transferred in the future. So we'll provide an overview of that and think about for development, what can potentially be done. But also the direction that I received from the board trustees was like, don't sell property, that's medicine property, and that's what we've been doing. But we want to talk about some next steps regards to the management of those two properties and the potential development of two, those two properties and what that might look like as we move forward. Uh, and both those properties are in Nembula. And then also give a bit to the board about the value of the state, uh, where is that right now, the values of the homes, and then also the cash value as well. So my goal is to bring that to the board and hope in January or February of where we're at regards to the state, we want to provide presentations to the board on that. Uh, also too, I wanted to highlight that included campus release update, and also update on diversity program as well. And then if you take a look at item number seventeen point two one, that's our master schedule for our facilities projects. And that includes.
Eighteen is all about future agenda items, everybody can read it. Oral reports is nineteen, Dr. Curry. Was that going to be a vote, darling? Oh, okay, huh, just moving, please.
So I have a couple, I have, I have about eight points to go in my long word. First of all, I would say. So I want to say thank you to our community for supporting, uh, twenty twenty four, register C C for Calhoun College and Compton County District. We've got to start sending years for all of our bond projects. Uh, this will provide us with an opportunity to build, repair our facilities, community needs and our students. Uh, the one thing I'm really proud of was on the next day, and seeing individuals walk into the, um, the new open area by construction building number two. Uh, it was just, it's just a nice reflection for me to see how far we've come from the road buildings to now when people are able to walk through the campus. And then I'm also afraid about the new construction projects that come up. But we have more projects coming online very soon. I actually thank you to the faculty, it classified for Beth Hills, uh, and managers and supervisors for attending the Taste of Thanksgiving. That was held, I'm gonna slow down twenty twenty four. Uh, as Alicia had, who works at our Alicia Records Department, said we have come a long way regards to appetizers for Taste of Thanksgiving to the full hills of Thanksgiving. It was nice to see people being able to fellowship and, uh, have a good time, uh, having Thanksgiving, uh, lunch, uh, together. On Wednesday, uh, December eleventh, we will hold the fall twenty twenty four nursing day ceremony at six o'clock here in the division. We'll send a email and a calendar get back to the board. Hope you're able to attend this, uh, wonderful celebration of our nursing records. Uh, we have seats for those days as well, but it's on Wednesday, December eleventh, twenty twenty four at six o'clock here. I also want to say thank you to everyone that attended the, uh, grand opening ceremony for construction building one and two. It was a long time coming. It was cold, it was really nice. And I would say thank you, it was a, we had a nice turnout for the event. I do want to say thank you to, um, everyone else involved in the planning for the event. Uh, it was really nice, and I I really enjoyed myself, and I hope everyone did as well. On December tenth, uh, twelve to two o'clock, we'll host our annual employee holiday celebration. I'm really excited about that event, that's one that have a lot of opportunity drawings, and we have a chance to, uh, fellowship before the holiday. Uh, there will be a student turkey giveaway on Wednesday, uh, the November twelfth, twenty twenty four, two thirty to five thirty. We have four hundred turkeys. Uh, students have to show their ID at the farmer market to receive a ticket, student ticket will be picked up and to be able to pick up the turkey at the donation. So now, so we're trying to coordinate events like the farmer market, so not only are you able to get the turkey, but you also get a two dollar voucher to be able to buy some fixins and boots and vegetables and stuff like that as well. And so when you think about community resources, you provide a lot of food to support us, too, because we know that our students are dealing, are dealing with housing and food issues. And that concludes.
Student trustee Thomas.
Alrighty, so of course, foremost, thank you for, um, for your report. And thank you for the farmer's market, you know, I haven't paid farmer's market, thank you for the food trucks. Thank you for listening to me and implementing the food trucks, even though, um, the mighty schools one didn't work out. Thank you for the pizza three sixty or whichever one you got coming on Tuesday now. Um, I attended the A C C T, um, last month, that conference went well, um, it was cold out there too. Conference went well, I I learned a lot, I gained a lot, um, I feel that, um, Compton is doing great work. Um, being in that conference, um, kind of let me see what other schools are doing and what they're not doing. Um, I sat in the mental health, um, workshop, and, um, I sat in the SNAP and, uh, CalFresh workshop. And everything that they're speaking about, that they're trying to have other schools implement, we have, um, already going on. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Curry, thank you to the board. And even with that being said, I tried to have more students come to say, um, you know, something nice about Compton, what they experienced. But time permit and some had to go, so I have one student here left, um, Ms. Demisha Fuller. And she's going to speak to you guys about what she appreciates at Calhoun College. Since I went to that conference and I, I I learned so much, that Compton is doing so much great work, and I'm beating down the block about you know, this, this and that, and I've wanted to take time to say thank you, um, for the work that you are doing, and we have another student who's going to say thank you as well. So yes, that's all I have to say. Yes, I had another one just left, I think I just seen.
I'm Demisha Fuller, I'm the A S G physician of the financial aid. And when I came to Compton, I had one goal, and that was to get my education so that I could open my own daycare. And, uh, when I missed doing that, I went directly to Dr. First, and I worked child care team, and she told me to become a student worker. Um, becoming a student worker, we helped me financially with taking care of my daughter. And, um, after that, I ended up going to a, um, walkover event where I met Dr. Bates. He awarded me the opportunity to jo- join the D I M U program. And that was an amazing experience where I got to meet, um, Ms. Shirley, who's a, um, secretary of state. As well as here in Compton, I got to meet, um, Holly Mitchell, and, um, I can't, I'm so sorry, but I'm there. But I I had a lot of opportunities to see what student advocacy scene look like through D I M U program, and I really enjoyed that. And I decided to join it, you know, G. Here in Compton, I feel like that I had everything I need to thrive, it's alive. And because I take my education seriously, I feel like everybody will take my education seriously too, in this, um, uh, home and family environment, and thank you.
Before you go, where did you go with your D I M U program, you didn't talk about who you trapped?
Uh, we went to Sacramento to see Shirley, and then we went to, uh, Washington to have a debate where I was with other Harvard students and students from the South or whatever. And we were in a meeting like this where we represented places and happened, and our representative told them that this, the kids, um, section. Where we tried to figure out solutions to solve, um, security in total. And that was amazing, and then, um, I had the opportunity to travel to Detroit, um, Alabama. Um, we landed in St. Louis, New York, and I also went to Calhoun. Yeah, it was amazing, and you know, the world was, I mean, we, we here, and it was the future to learn. But the world is our educational playground, and we can learn as much as we can in a booth, but when we step out here in the real world, that's when we get the real knowledge, okay?
So that's all speakers.
She went Detroit the best.
Back at the beginning of a meeting to share.
Oh, why I am gonna bring more back. I'm I'm gonna do it again once it's not to nine o'clock.
Oh, I'm sorry, I know you, you didn't apologize.
I attended the, the building. It was a great experience. Dr. Curry mentioned, um, there's she's been kind of, I'm excited about that. That, um, we need to attach and saying putting that out there and the the bookers. By a high margin, it's over two, there's a flip there, so. Excited for what's to come.
Thank you so much, um, I just want to say thank you to everyone for the meeting and the presentation, and I want to say leadership matters. It matters, it matters. Yeah, with everything that goes on, you know, we are just a deep five, but I think you see with the decision making of his administration, our faculty, our staff, um, and the community of our students. It is important for us to recognize as our student trust to be there, that we are blessed to have impact, I just heard from one student, help the students, the the group that went to Ghana. So many other stakeholders in this community, the dual enrollment, that's transformative, I'll tell you. It saves kids two years of college tuition, something we don't even talk about a lot. When you start thinking about the impact, and it is unfortunate, now I know personally, it is unfortunate that we can't decide, uh, what the reason we're here for. So I just want to thank the community for the bond, I want to thank, again, you know, you talked about student housing. Um, people need to look beyond their little backyard. There are a lot of people who don't have housing, forget for education, but especially for education, who are trying to contribute to the economy of this whole country, so it's very, you know, it's backwards in in many ways to 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 question that. But at the end of the day, none of this has to be done. None of it has to be done. And I just want to thank everyone who works so hard, doing it, being so hard to 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 keep pushing. Alright, my job.
I I'm saving myself for another time, but we did have a great time at the, uh, grand opening ribbon cutting. Thank you, yeah, it was very good, it was, it was okay, but, uh, I just want to say goodnight. Next meeting is next month. The meeting adjourned at eight forty.